Good evening and welcome to the December 16th meeting. This is Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall, calling the meeting to order, and we'll ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting on my far right. Your far left is Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member of the board. To his left is James Morse, who is a full voting member. To my right is Scott Solinsky, who is the board's clerk, I'm sorry, the vice chair. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's chair.
Oh.
I can't get it right tonight.
We'll all switch.
Yep, the clerk. We're all switching roles tonight. And to our far left, your far right is Scott Peterson, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Norrie Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for the night. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments, and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, and once recognized, we ask you to come to the podium to your far left. We ask you to state your name and address for the record. We do limit public comment to two minutes per person, and while you are standing or while you are providing public comment, we ask you to please stand behind the podium and speak into the microphone. That microphone does not amplify within the room; that's for the benefit of those who are watching at home. The board will then either continue or close a hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain, and after the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. As for board discussions and decisions, the board may then further discuss a project among ourselves, we'd make a motion to deny or approve that would be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment, followed by two continuations, four new hearings, and we do have a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up tonight is public comment. This public comment portion is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak on something on our agenda, hang tight until the appropriate time. But is anyone out there with something to say that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Moving into our continuation scheduled for 6:30. We do have application 61-20, Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4 and T-Ticket, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 16 single-family dwellings. Four dwellings will be affordable. Voting members on this project are myself, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and Scott Solinsky.
Mr. Chairman, there's been some additional information in the files since the last hearing. I'll read those in. First of all, dated November 22nd, 2021, this is coming from Stephen O. McKenzie, real estate consultant, regarding notice of withdrawal of representation, Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Zero Percival Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Dear Mr. Hurry, please accept this letter as a notice of my withdrawal of representation of Echo Land Development LLC with regards to its application for a comprehensive permit through the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I am withdrawing from representation for personal reasons and professional differences, and this withdrawal is effective as of the date of this letter. I want to thank each of the members of the board, as well as Norrie and Ashley, for all of your extended courtesies and indulgences throughout this application process. I've had the pleasure to represent clients before the Board of Appeals for the past 27 years, and on each occasion, I have always been treated with respect and fairness. I look forward to continuing the same relationship with the board and zoning staff. Edwin Montero of Echo Land Development LLC is aware of my withdrawal of representation, and he informs me that he anticipates moving forward with the next scheduled hearing before the board, December 16th, 2021, which is tonight. We did receive a letter regarding a legal opinion on the lot, and this is from Christopher G. Leberts, Leberts &amp; Leberts, regarding Edwin Montero proposed 40B Project Percival Road. Dear members of the board, Edwin Montero has retained me to review, analyze, and render an opinion as to whether or not the 5.46 acre parcel shown as Lot 4 on recorded plan 587, page 39, is a lot which can be built upon. My opinion is yes, and I would like to offer rationale which I hope will be helpful to the board. The property is owned Ag B. As a beginning point, residential lots and structures are allowed in the district, so hurdle number one is satisfied. According to the zoning bylaw 240-67, dimensional regulations, there is clearly sufficient lot area to build. There is sufficient area to meet minimum lot width requirements. The lot can be accessed from Trotting Park Road, and there is more than enough land area to construct a road servicing one large parcel, or two if the owner sought to divide the parcel further. At present, there is no application before the planning board to further divide the parcel. Hence, with very little question, the lot meets or could easily meet all dimensional regulations presently in place under the town bylaw. In my opinion, a buildable lot of land, clearly a buildable lot of land. It should be noted that Lot 4 contains a note that is not a building lot. I have spoken with town building commissioner, Ladio Gore. Mr. Gore has clearly indicated to me that the note is on the plan only because there was not a clear determination of access to Lot 4 at the time the plan was approved. Access being the overriding issue or concern. That issue is clearly rendered moot by a submission of Mr. Montero's 40B plan. Access to the parcel from Trotting Park Road is clearly demonstrated, rendering the unbuildable note as not binding the property in perpetuity. According to Mr. Gore, if the parcel has proper access, the unbuildable note is not binding. This is true whether the parcel is deemed a single lot or further divided, especially true under Mass General Law's Chapter 40B. I would urge the board to consult with Mr. Gore directly if these representations are questioned or challenged in any way, shape, or form. Mr. Montero has filed an application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40B, which further bolsters my opinion that the lot can be developed as proposed. Assuming and having demonstrated access is my very strong opinion that the lot can be developed under Chapter 40B. The rules and regulations being far more liberal in favor of development than under traditional zoning and zoning bylaws. At latest glance, Falmouth sits at approximately 5.3% of affordable housing units versus all units, well below the state mandate of 10%. It is crystal clear to this attorney, also a lifelong resident of Falmouth, that it is becoming ever more difficult to find workers due to the fact they can't afford to live in Falmouth. This I see every day, as I'm sure members of the board do as well. Second and most dear to my heart is the fact that I am seeing younger people, fresh out of school, simply unable to acquire a home in our community. Our children and grandchildren simply can't afford to remain in the same community they were fortunate enough to grow up in. The shortage of affordable housing in Falmouth, I would suggest, is a well-known fact. Mr. Montero is seeking to do his part in helping to alleviate the problem, and application under 40B is both consistent with the state mandate of 10% and the very well-recognized needs specific to Falmouth. Chapter 40B, in my opinion, allows the boards to approve his application with reasonable restrictions that do not render the project uneconomic. So what I mean by all of this is very simple. Because the property can be accessed via Trotting Park Road, the note on the plan indicating that the parcel is not a building lot is essentially meaningless. Public policy clearly encourages the board to recognize this fact and the demands of our community. In short, we have an opportunity to do good here in approving the application. I hope this letter proves helpful. I would urge the board to consult with the town planner, town council, and building commissioner on the very same subject. I urge the board to approve the application, and I thank members for allowing me this opportunity to be heard. Then on the same subject, I guess this was from Thomas Bott on December 2nd, while he was still the town planner. He says, "In my opinion, under Mass General Law's Chapter 41, subsection 81L, the planning board is the entity that determines whether there is adequate access to create a building lot. See, a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or town in which the land lies, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon. In the case of Percival Road, the attached A&R, signed by Brian Curry, notes that Lot 4 is not buildable. The remedy for the gonzoals, in my opinion, is to present a new A&R plan to the planning board, requesting the note in the plan of record to be removed. If in the planning board's opinion there is sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby, the board would likely endorse a plan and make it into a building lot." I am not aware of any other mechanism to make a non-buildable lot buildable, and that's signed Thomas Bott. And then we have a letter dated December 15th, 2021, and this is from Troy Wall Associates regarding Zero Percival Road, Echo Land Development LLC, application for comprehensive permit. Dear Chairman Hurry, on behalf of Daniel Colturi, owner of 187 Percival Road, Patricia A. Harris, owner of 181 Percival Road, and William and Margaret Overholz, owner of 193 Percival Road, here and after abutters, I respectfully submit the following comments and concerns regarding the above referenced application for comprehensive permit. One, list of waivers. A list of waivers submitted by the developer continue to fail to identify all the waivers that are needed for this project. Without a complete list of waivers, the application is incomplete and cannot be acted upon. Without a complete list of waivers, the board is unable to engage in the required analysis of determining whether the granting of each requested waiver is consistent with local needs and local concerns. Two, the road design is a safety hazard. The applicant has submitted revised plans insofar as the access road is concerned. The applicant has removed the plantings that were previously proposed down the center line of Percival Road and has reverted to the design that was proposed initially. This design is confusing and dangerous, and the board should therefore not approve the plan. In reviewing the application for a comprehensive permit, the Board of Appeals acts on behalf of all regulatory boards of Falmouth, including the planning board. As a result, the Board of Appeals must apply the Massachusetts subdivision control law. Since the subdivision control law is a state law, its provisions are not waivable under Mass General Law's Chapter 40B. Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, section 81m, states that the powers of the planning board in regulating construction of ways and access shall be exercised, with due regard for the provision of adequate access to all of the lots in a subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel, for lessening congestion in such ways and in the adjacent public ways, for reducing danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles, for securing safety in the case of fire, flood, panic, and other emergencies, for ensuring compliance with the applicable zoning ordinances or bylaws, for securing adequate provisions for water, sewage, drainage, underground utility services, fire, police, and other similar municipal equipment, and street lighting and other requirements where necessary in a subdivision, and for coordinating the ways in a subdivision with each other with the public ways in the city or town in which it is located, and with the ways in neighboring subdivisions. Mass General Law's Chapter 41, section 81U, states that the board has three options in the exercise of its power. The planning board shall approve, or if such plan does not comply with the subdivision control law or the rules and regulations of the planning board, shall modify and approve or shall disapprove such a plan. The developer's plan does not comply with Mass General Law's Chapter 41, subsection 81m, because the proposed road system is not safe and convenient for travel, does not reduce danger to life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles, and does not coordinate with the ways in neighboring subdivisions, namely Percival Road, and does not comply with numerous Falmouth Planning Board subdivision regulations, including the following. Subsection 305-24A1, streets shall be designed and located to be continuous with existing streets insofar as practicable, and shall compose a convenient system with connections adequate to ensure free and safe movement. Subsection 305-24B1A, streets shall be designed with a layout of 44 feet. Subsection 305-24B1B, width of pavement shall be 22 feet. Subsection 305-24B8, if a street layout at the entrance to the subdivision abuts property not owned by the subdivider, the width of the layout shall be 60 feet for the first 200 feet from the intersecting road. The entrance road should be located within the layout so that the extra 16 feet of the width will be used to provide additional buffering from the road for the abutting property owner. Subsection 305-24D2, dead-end streets shall not be longer than 500 feet. Subsection 305-24D3, dead-end streets shall provide a turnaround with a radius of at least 60 feet. The peer review engineer stated with respect to the intersection of the new road with Percival Road that the applicant should clarify how the new roadway is tying into the existing Percival Road. The developer has not provided any clarification and responded to the comments simply with waiver. In his memorandum of March 10th, 2021, Falmouth staff engineer, Scott Schulter, P.E., similarly stated that the drawing is not clear in the area of Percival Road and Trotting Park intersection. In its memorandum of April 7th, 2021, the planning board stated that it had concerns with the proposed road system. The proposed entrance directly abutting Percival Road is potentially hazardous and creates conflicting turning motions for vehicles wishing to turn onto the common driveway and those wishing to turn onto Percival Road. The proposed new common driveway has no clear separation from Percival Road and will create possible dangerous and confusing issues for vehicles wishing to turn onto either way. The majority of the planning board does not support the project. It is manifest that the plan does not comply with the subdivision control law and the town subdivision regulations, and that the town engineer and the planning board both advise that the road design not be approved. According to the Board of Appeals, accordingly, the Board of Appeals should deny the proposed plan. An applicant's inability or failure to provide a road design that is safe for all is a ground to deny the proposed project. The following decisions of the Housing Appeals Committee confirm this. Simon Hill LLC versus Norwell Zoning Board of Appeals. Single access road, 2,120 feet long, far exceeded the local 1,000-foot limit and posed substantial risk for emergency vehicles. Cozy Hearth Community Corp. versus Edgar Town Zoning Board of Appeals. Additionally, access required based upon fire chief's testimony regarding inaccuracy of a single-access cul-de-sac road in excess of local regulations. Lexington Woods LLC versus Waltham Board of Appeals. Lack of a secondary access in combination with the grade and design of the single-access drive outweighed the regional need for affordable housing. Sherwood Estates versus Peabody Board of Appeals. Combined length and grade of access road constituted a planning defect and a health and safety hazard of sufficient gravity to outweigh regional need for affordable housing. Three, the road is not a common driveway, and the proposed design should not be approved. At the July 8th, 2021, hearing, the developer announced that he was changing the nature of the development from a 16-lot subdivision to a 16-unit condominium, and asserted that the access road should now be reviewed as a common driveway and not as a street. This change in nomenclature is a transparent attempt to avoid compliance with and to avoid having to request numerous waivers from the Falmouth subdivision regulations. The attempt is flawed for the following reasons. A common, oh, a common driveway is a use of land, and in order to construct a common driveway, such a use must be expressly authorized by the zoning bylaw. See Bobrowski, Massachusetts Land Use and Planning Law. And then 12I, RHB Development Inc. versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Duxbury Land Court, miscellaneous number 237281, from 1997. Under Falmouth zoning bylaw, common driveway is defined as a vehicular way which is not a street, providing access to three or more residential, industrial, or commercial lots. Section 240-13, since the proposed common driveway serves only a single lot, it does not meet the definition of a common driveway under the Falmouth zoning bylaw. Furthermore, Percival Road is a street under the definition of street in the zoning bylaw because it is a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Falmouth. Since a common driveway cannot be a street, the portion of the proposed roadway that overlaps Percival Road cannot be considered to be a common driveway. Even if the proposed roadway could somehow be considered a common driveway, the proposed connection with Percival Road should not be approved for the following reasons. In the Ag B District, Agricultural District, a common driveway is allowed by special permit from the planning board. See section 240-38. A special permit may only be issued for proposed use if the use will be in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of the bylaw. The purpose of the Falmouth zoning bylaw includes to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, to facilitate adequate provisions of transportation. In order to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, a common driveway must be designed in a manner that will safely serve the traffic that it is expected to serve. Pursuant to sections 305-3 of the Falmouth subdivision regulations, a single-family dwelling is presumed to generate 10 vehicle trips per day. Pursuant to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I.T.E., a single-family home is deemed to generate 9.44 trips per day. Thus, the roadway will serve, the proposed development is expected to serve between 151 to 160 vehicle trips per day, and must be designed accordingly. Furthermore, where the roadway overlaps Percival Road, the design must also account for the vehicle trips generated by the seven single-family homes on Percival Road and Cardoza Road. These homes are deemed to generate 66 to 70 trips per day. Thus, the stretch of Percival Road which the developer proposes to use to service development must be designed to accommodate a total of 217 to 230 trips per day. The developer's characterization of the roadway as a common driveway does not entitle the developer to disregard the design requirements that are necessary to provide adequate and safe transportation for the traffic that the roadway will serve, nor does it entitle the developer to disregard the safety of the people who will be using the road. If the planning board were to be presented with an application for a special permit for a common driveway, the board would analyze the traffic that the road is expected to serve, and would undoubtedly turn to the design standards and its subdivision regulations for guidance. And in this case, the board has the benefit of the planning board's review, and the planning board found the design to be unsafe, and stated that it does not support the project. Since the zoning board is standing in the shoes of the planning board with respect to this project, the zoning board must be satisfied that the proposed road system is adequate and safe for all who will be using it, including not only the owners of the proposed homes, but also the homeowners on Percival Road and Cardoza Road who currently rely upon Percival Road as their means of access. The planning board has determined that the road system is not safe. Approval of the project would require the zoning board to go against the recommendation of the planning board and the town engineer. Furthermore, the proposed common driveway does not meet the design standards in numerous respects, including but not limited to subsection 305-24A1, which provides, "Streets shall be designed and located to be continuous with existing streets, insofar as practicable, and shall compose a convenient system with connections adequate to ensure free and safe movement." The overlapping and transecting design does not meet the requirements of 305-24A1, and will be unsafe. Accordingly, the Board of Appeals should deny the proposed plan. Four, the proposed project is inconsistent with local concerns regarding environmental protection. The proposed project is within the Coastal Pond Overlay District and the Water Resource Protection District. The CPOD protects water quality in coastal ponds and harbors. The WRPD ensures inadequate quality and quantity of drinking water, conserves natural resources of the town, and prevents temporary and permanent contamination of the environment. Development that complies with the requirements of these overlay districts and the 150-foot frontage requirement in the overlay district would result in no more than one dwelling on the lot. Proposal is for 16 dwellings on de facto 15,000-square-foot lots, each served by a Title V system and no denitrification. The overlay district requires that such dwellings be served by a sewer treatment plant or a denitrifying septic system, neither of which is proposed. Proposed project also is subject to the wildlife corridor regulations, which were adopted to protect wildlife by requiring development to be designed to coexist with wildlife and important wildlife habitat, establishing a permanent corridors for wildlife feeding, breeding, and movement. These purposes are accomplished by requiring dedicated open space areas for wildlife. The proposed project has no dedicated area for wildlife. The abutters contend that this proposed development is inconsistent with local concerns because it fails to adequately protect water resources and the environment. Thank you for your consideration, and that is signed by Brian J. Wall, again representing Daniel Colturi, Patricia Harris, and Mr. and Mrs. Overholz. That's all we have.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, do we have Mr. Montero himself?
On the, Edwin Montero, I'm the applicant, 169 Meyer Vista Avenue. On the last continuance I had, I was saying we had to get the drainage storm calculations for the 100-year. That has been done. It is on the plan. We do have the peer engineer, and I also have my engineer, Walter Hermano, to discuss any of the issues you may have. To let you know that the stormwater drainage did pass, but if you do have any questions, I want to defer to them. In regards to the other questions that Mr. Wall has stated, I'll be happy to address those after the water drainage calculations that you requested that have to be on the plan.
Adal Shaheen, peer review engineer. So yes, we received a stormwater calculation last week, a week ago, from today. We went through it. We had some comments. We went back and forth with Walter. And we were able to resolve all the issues. I think it's only minor issues that require some plan revisions at this point, but all the stormwater has met all the state standards, and I think we're satisfied with it. As I said, just cosmetic changes on the plans that are required at this point. But everything is met. They were able to mitigate up to a 100-year storm, which is very good, you know, compared to the last plans that we submitted. There was nothing really done for that. So that's, I think, as I said, we're satisfied with that. Now, I think only a few items are left on the roadway that we would like to bring to attention. Is the most important thing is really, again, coordinating the access between the new development and the existing, you know, residents on Percival Road. We want to make sure that it's all squared away. Well, in the revised plans, they show have some connections now between their roadway and the Percival Road. So there's some connection already made. And they're also proposing a stop sign. I don't know, is the plans here somewhere? Can we open the plans? Yes, so you see here, this is the proposed driveway now. They moved it a little bit since last time, so it's been kicked out a little bit. So more or less, it aligns with the existing driveway or access to the site. And you see here, they are tying into it right here, and they're also doing a radius right in this area right here to tie into the existing driveway. They're proposing a stop sign here, which is good. At least people coming out from here, they can stop, wait for traffic to come through here. So that's an improvement. They also addressed the side distance, you know, the side distance issue that we had. They're removing some of the shrubs in here, which is good. So that's all good. The only concern we have here is just, there's a fence right here. Just have to make sure that fence is not going to be obstructing the side distance in the future. So we'll have to, you know, make some, I don't know, maybe some agreement with that abutter that they're not going to build in this area, otherwise it would be obstructing that side distance from somebody leaving from here. They have to be able to see up to 150 feet in the traveling lane, which is with them right here. So that's one concern that we had that has to be just addressed. And the other one is comment 41A, which is we had all along, which relates to the ADA. So we would like to see, I know, initially we said we would like to see a five-foot sidewalk, but we don't need to see a full length of sidewalk for five feet. We just need to have one area, every 200 feet, that's five by five. Allows ADA people to, you know, to turn around if they need to and go back in the other direction. So that's really required, and I don't really advise against any way over against that one. We should probably at least do that. Now, driveways can serve us for that purpose as well. We can, you can use the driveways, but we just have to see the grades, just to make sure that the driveways meet ADA grading as well. And if they do, then they have more than five by five area to meet that. As I said, other open items related to, as I said, minimum comments that we had on the stormwater, which is very, very minor comments, not really, you know, any significant comments here. So those are really the major items. All the other items that we had related to the roadway are really, they're not really any, for engineering standing point... any, for engineering standing point, we can, you know, we can accept them. It just really do not meet the zoning requirements or the bylaws. So we need just to make sure, you know, that if this road has ever been, you know, if this project ever moves forward, that road cannot be accepted, you know, if it's as a public right away. It has to stay as a private, because it does not mean, it does not meet your bylaws, basically. But as I said, nothing here that's really outstanding. Everything, I think, satisfies us as far as roadway design, width, and geometry. And the stormwater is also, we are on board with that. We've also looked at the trip generation, as was brought up last time. So we looked at the latest trip generation statistic published by I T, by I T E, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We looked at the 11th editions. So this sub-development here, or this development here, is going to generate about 187 trips. That's a very conservative number. We just, as I said, that many, well, does not have a similar-sized development, but we kind of escalated, or just made the ratio between the large development to the small development for 16 units detached, single-family. So, but the peak hours, the peak hours in the morning is only going to be like 14 total trips in the morning. And the peak hours in the morning is equal to seven, between seven and nine. And in the weekday peak, P M. peak, is only going to be about 18 trips. So we looked at those volumes, you know, they're not really very high volumes, you know, 18 hour, 18 vehicles per hour. That's not really a lot of volume, you know, to be concerned with. So just want to bring that up. Yes, I know that was brought up last time, we just make sure that's clear with the board. There's not really any issue with the trip generation here. So that's all I have. I think we provided our comments, our comments to them, and they responded to them, and we gave, I think, the latest tonight to Ashley and Noreen. And we don't have any, you know, further comments. We just have to see the final revised, you know, plans when we adjust our comments for the stormwater. And I think that should, and then the ADA comment about the five-by-five area. I think that should satisfy us as far as for this review. Anybody have any questions on the?
Questions from the board? Anything? No? All right, thank you.
All right. The concern that they're having for the neighborhood is saying that the road intercepts on the property going the Trotting Park Road. What they're not mentioning is, is that that road was put in back in the 1930s, and obviously it wasn't done by an engineer, because it's all haphazard going down Percival Road. The original land back in 1944 was 28, 22.8 acres of land. A gentleman named Williams owned it, abutting Peterson property behind it. That land was landlocked, and what he did was he gave a 12-foot easement on his property to, if he ever sold any additional parcels, to go out to where Mill Way is, where they don't have their connection. And on the plan right here, this was the original Percival Road that goes behind the Cape Verdean Club. That's the actual Percival Road. land, this is the land right here that I own, and the right-of-way is to the west of the property where my land is and where the road is. So if you look at what the town engineer gave, where the layout is right here, there's approximately another 12 feet where Mill Way is, 12 to 14 feet. If you've driven down there, you see the mailboxes aren't on anybody's property. That's actually Mill Way. You take out that 12 feet and cut the trees down and widen the road, you have no traffic problems, because on the original, on the revised plan that we have, on the entrance, you would create a wider road. So if there is traffic coming in, there's plenty of room to stop and continue with traffic coming in and out of Trotting Park Road. The other thing you should realize too is, on Percival Road, there's the three abutters who are opposing this project, there isn't another house for about 900 feet down the road, which comes to John Lachati, and then it finally comes into Mr. Gonzales' house. So there is adequate access for everybody to use the road with no traffic jams or no traffic problems. And what they didn't show, which should have been put in back in 1944, was access on this left-hand side, which would be the west side, over here, to widen the road. That was their access, actually, to get onto what was called Locust Field Road, which is Trotting Park Road now. So basically, someone just cut short onto this property, which I'm developing, and they're saying that the, that's the road that's causing all of the difficulty, but it's not. It's actually Mill Road is where they should have been cutting in the road originally on the original deed and right-of-way for them to get onto Trotting Park Road.
So are you suggesting widening that section?
I can widen it, there's no problem, yeah.
Okay, so, so can you automatically, who owns the property on the other side?
Over here?
Yeah.
Those houses all have access on Trotting Park Road, and actually, the 197 Trotting Park Road that just sold, that actually is not, should be on a Percival Road address, because the person on 197 Percival Road, their land subdivides actually comes over like this on Trotting Park Road, and that was never put in. So either Mr. Oberhertz gave that person an easement or whatever, but the address isn't correct, saying that it was 197 Percival Road, because they did have frontage and access on Trotting Park Road.
So if you widen, so if you widen it there, are you able to widen it on that side without permission by anyone, or do you have to widen it on your side?
It's Mill Way, I would go to the town. I'm sure the town would want the extra width for the driveway coming in, because everybody else up here, all of these abutters that you see up here on the property, they were all landlocked. That was 22 acres at one time. And again, when it was, when Williams went to sell a piece of the land off, he had no access to get onto Locust Street. So he deeded, and I sent the information to Noreen today, showing that the deed was a 12-foot easement for any time he subdivided a piece of property, whether it was one acre, two acres, that somebody would have access to get off their property and onto Trotting Park Road. And at the time, it was called Locust Field Road.
So was Mill Way public or private?
Mill Way would have been a, would have been a public way.
Thank you.
And some of the changes that we did make from the original plan, the road was moved over an additional 15 feet to give them more room when the road was put in.
So you, Mr. Montero, you're proposing to widen it as we're looking at it, the left side of the road?
I would widen right in here. If you've driven down there and you make the turn-
Who owns it? I mean, who owns that?
It's got to be the town, because everybody else only has a 12-foot right-of-way coming in, and they were supposed to access Mill Way, and that was never put in. So the town owns that land.
Well, the only reason I ask is because you referenced deeds and recordings and stuff like that.
Correct.
But it doesn't say who owns it, whether the town owns it, or it's privately owned, or?
It is owned by the town, from my understanding, when I spoke with Scott Schluter. I mean, he even references it as Mill Way, and he even goes back to when the original road was called Goat Alley. And that actually should have been put in years ago. And that whole strip that's right in here, and these mailboxes are right there on that land, that's their 12-foot strip they were supposed to have, only as an access for them to get off their property and come onto Trotting Park Road.
So if that was the case, widen to get all the way wouldn't service that requirement, would it?
I don't follow you.
You said just to access. It says nothing about widening the road totally, right?
No, I would, I'm presenting that now, if they're saying they think that's, if it's a traffic problem, you can extend it another 12 feet where my roadway is coming in.
So what would be the total width if you widened?
You would probably have, it'd be a total of probably around 40 feet wide.
Do we have anything in the record, or do you have anything that the town accepts ownership of that property? I know you're saying logically, but I mean, someone has to own it, and someone has to say, "I own it." So you don't have anything that says the town owns it?
Just going on what the town, what the engineers told me.
But that was verbally?
That was when they were looking at the subdivision plan, and again, when they-
So it was verbally? No, I trust what they said, but it's not in writing or anything.
And we have that in the record, Ron?
What?
But again, this is what he's showing right here.
We'd have to get, we'd have to get a, we'd have to get a copy of somebody from the town with the plan that says we own the parcel with the legal description.
This is what he's showing right there, and that alleviates, if you decide you wanted it, it would alleviate any, if they think there's any excess problems with traffic. And there's not going to be any problems with traffic right now, even according to peer review, and, oops, let me bring this up. And the entrance. And I would also state, the, I could have come in with 30 units with a different design. Most of your 40Bs come in six per acre. I'm at 2.6, I think you've heard that before. So you have a total of 16 units, 12 affordable, the capes and ranches. I'm just looking to keep in within the neighborhood. I think I've done that. I've built several houses on that way, on the Gonzales' side, on the opposite side of Percival Road. So access, obviously, is used by any of the people on both sides of the road. So it's not a question of whether I have a right or anybody else has a right. I'm coming off my own land on the Trotting Park Road to create my own subdivision. And again, there is more room if you wanted to widen that out.
Mr. Chairman, what do you propose on, I think, the peer engineers, that there's a section of fence that's on private way that needs to come down to ensure good site distance or adequate site distance?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the, if you look on the plan here-
But you don't own that property, so you can't guarantee-
Well, if it's on the town, if it's on the town property, I have to get permission. And it says that on the plan. So anything that's on the plan, for it's a tree, if it's, I'm sure if it's a fence, if it's the, one of the abutting neighbors, that's going to be determined by the D P W whether or not it has to come down.
So does, so where your pointer is right now, that triangle section at the bottom, is that still owned by, it says Emmanuel Gonzales?
No, that's on my property.
What's that, like?
That's your drainage, that's one of the drainages that come off the road.
So just below that, like that, who owns that section?
That is, well, if you don't see the subdivision, but it's Manuel Gonzales. So they have a house that's approximately right there.
So that's the section that I think he was mentioning as a-
Fence, yeah, there's like a chain link fence, I think.
Yeah, so that would be, so that would be Gonzales' fence. So would you be able to get anything from Mr. Gonzales?
If I ask him, it's up to them for, I can't touch somebody else's property, but if I had, if they let me say they can remove it for more site view, that's fine. But I think a lot of the, some of the things that you do want to remove is just any of the shrubs that are there. And that can be depicted on any street coming out that has trees or shrubs on somebody's property. But the ones that we're looking at right there is basically on the town's property, where the sidewalk is.
To clarify, I think you said it's a chain link fence. I thought the peer engineer said it was a stockade fence.
No, it was a chain link fence.
Oh, it is a chain link, okay, so that's difference in viewability.
I was thinking of something that's not, that's what it's trying to do.
Now, the other thing is, I find it hard to read that deed. The one thing, and I was assuming you'd bring it up, but I didn't see where this was, it was a registered deed, or it was an official deed. Am I missing something, Bob? You have a-
Well, he sent over just a portion of a page, but again, yeah, it's not an official copy, but I assume he could send us a full recorded copy.
It might become moot later, but I just, all right, I just-
Anyone else?
I have a question for the, for his lawyer.
Let's go.
Yeah. Are you his legal representation, Mr. Lebretz?
Well, I had an involvement for a limited purpose. I wrote that letter because I wanted to address that note on the subdivision plan that's a non-ableable lot, and that was really why I'm here tonight.
Maybe you should stand with him while I ask this question. How many waivers are outstanding presently?
I, Ms. Stockman has the waiver. I only have four waivers that are on there. One was the length of the road, you do have the tee for the fire department. One was a waiver from going to 54 inches to the 48 inches for the sidewalk. I saw what Mr. Shinin was doing, having one section widen out. I don't have a problem with that. The other one was the wildlife corridor. We did prove that with the engineer, who stated that there was no endangered species. So that was one of the third waiver, and-
So you have no more outstanding that you're going to be asking for?
No, I actually, I took some out, because the subdivision plan, as it sits, if there was regular zoning, that if it was 10, 15,000 square feet like it was, this plan does meet that. The only thing that I have is the waiver on the road because of the length, but everything else would meet a subdivision standard.
So you're testing that your application, first and foremost, is absolutely complete?
Yes, yes, Anne.
Okay. The reason I asked Mr. Lebretz to stand up is because with his opinion, he had referenced the fact that we need affordable housing for workforce, and, but yet, I have, on at least two occasions, asked Mr. Montero about being more in line with the Falmouth Housing Plan with the size of the houses and the bedroom counts. And he's, up until this point, been totally resistant to anything other than he's proposing. Is that still your position?
Well, the reason why is, is that if I change any of-
Just a-
Yes.
It's just a yes or no question?
Yeah, I know, but for public record, it has to be, I want it to be stated, because if you change one of the affordable houses, which is a two-bedroom house, you have to change one of the market rate houses to a two-bedroom.
Absolutely.
Okay? So since I've reduced the development by 50%, it would be economically unfeasible. Now, another thing is, I was just reported to the Board of Directors on the Falmouth Housing Trust. They just had an approval for them on Lewis Lane, and they all have three-bedroom homes. A three-bedroom home is more stable for a family coming in. I think it's going to be, create less turnover if somebody has a one or two-bedroom, if they're going to get married or have a family. If you have your police officers or firemen coming in, or your nurses coming into the town, you know, they're not going to look at a one-bedroom house or a two-bedroom house. And the difference is, is maybe a $10,000 price in the affordability going from a three to a two-bedroom.
But I assume you have read the Falmouth Housing Plan?
Yes, I have.
And what they're looking for with affordable housing?
Yes, I have, yeah. And to go one step further, I would say when you're talking about one and two bedrooms, if I was coming with a project that had rentals, I'd be putting all one and two-bedroom rentals in. But as a home, I think all of you, when you were first purchasing a home, I don't think anybody was looking for a one- or two-bedroom home, no matter what the price was.
I'm sorry, I don't follow you. If there's a need for one- and two-bedroom apartments, why wouldn't there be a need for one- and two-bedroom homes?
This is a home where you're going to live, and you're going to be here for at least 10, 15, 20 years. There's a difference when you're renting versus owning.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just for clarification, this is now a condominium plan, right?
It's an exclusive-use area where each of the units will have their own area, that's why it has the private septic on it, and-
But it's still, but it's still based now a condominium versus individual?
Correct, but they will have individual areas for their lot, for exclusive areas, whether it's 10,000, I'm not sure what the square footage is on it. But each of the 16 units will have their own piece of land that'll be exclusive-use area.
So is there any common space at all, since it's a condominium plan, and is there any consideration being made for guest parking where it's a condominium plan?
The parking for the driveways are large enough for two automobiles. The ranches have garages, so that's not going to be a problem. The capes, where the driveways that come in, are sufficient enough to have two automobiles.
And is there any community space at all, or it's just the roadway?
It's just the roadway, and the only common area is where the drainage is. We have to adhere to the drainage by the state guidelines.
So when you're basing your costs on what the homeowner will have to pay as part of the condominium, are they responsible for their own driveways, or is that association?
Correct, it would be an association. So basically, they would be responsible for their own driveways, they'd be responsible for any of the snow removal, and they would have to have an association for any of the roadways if it ever needs repair or upgrades.
And I know when Mr. McKenzie was doing this for you, he was going to give us a breakdown on what the estimate of the cost would be of an affordable- on what the estimate of the cost would be of an affordable unit versus a market rate unit on the condominium fees, and he was going to give us info on another project he said, and I'm not sure, but I think it was, and it was in Mashpee, it was a complex.
Well, it's based on the percentage of the price and the amount of units, 12 units versus the four units, that's how it would get broken down.
So how are you breaking down the voting percentage? You're doing it on the size of the unit or the price of the unit?
It would be, on that one there, I don't know, it would be probably on the price of the unit. But everybody would still have equal voting rights. Because you buy an affordable doesn't mean you have less of an opinion how something is...
So we've gotten into this before on sometimes condominium projects, where, based on size or price, since the affordable units are sold at such a reduced rate, a lot of times, they get a lower voting percentage or lower fees.
Correct.
So if you're going to be doing this as a condominium plan, which I assume you are, if you could just give us some kind of breakdown of how that is going to be, how that's going to be set up?
Okay.
Because a lot of times, if the affordable units get a lower voting percentage, it becomes a problem.
Okay.
Because they get overridden by the rest of the development. And I think he was also going to give us something, if you're going to be basing this on price of unit versus size of unit, I think that's what he was going to give us, a comparison of somewhere else in Massachusetts, where they base the condominium percentage on price versus size. If you can get us that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And maybe it went over me, because I was reading a lot this week. Is the note on the A and R now, since access, you know, we went back and forth, I think, when the town council said something, we could review a new A and R instead of the planning board. Am I getting that mixed up with another project?
You're talking about the subdivision control law?
I'm talking about, there was a note on the, an A and R that said it was not a buildable lot. Aladio said it was a buildable lot, and then we asked town council to weigh in on it.
Yes, so we would have to have something from, you know, right now, just on your Aladio point, just from the file. Right now, the only comments we have on Aladio were from Mr. Leberts, so we don't actually have something directly from...
And due testimony, it wasn't an affirmation that it was a buildable lot.
No, so we would...
They just had no proof that it wasn't at that time, correct?
Yeah, so if you're looking for that, then we would request that the Aladio would give us something.
But I just want to back up. I thought I saw something from town council. I think...
No, this is, this is...
From Frank Duffy.
This is from...
Reaffirming.
This is from Mr. Leberts's letter, which said that he had spoken to Aladio Gore.
No, I know, I got that. Norrie, did you send anything out with an opinion, a private opinion, a legal opinion from town council on the A and R?
Yes.
And what did it say?
Well, it's exactly that.
Did you just say it was a private opinion?
It's exactly that.
That was to us.
You know, this is not Secret Service. If we have a legal opinion out there...
It's privileged, Jerry, and it votes for it.
Well, how do they know what to comply with if no one's told them that?
We haven't asked them for anything yet, Jerry.
But we have, I have an outstanding question on Aladio's privileged communication, and I can't, it sounds like this is a Department of Defense court.
I can tell you this. Mr. Montero indicated to me when he first came to see me that that came up at the prior hearing. I wasn't involved at the time, and I looked at the plan. And you're right, that lot, four, I believe it is, says, there is a note that says not a building lot. And when I looked at it, I thought, it makes no sense to me, because it clearly has, you know, 5.46 acres, it has frontage, it has everything that tells me it's a buildable lot. What I did is I took the liberty of going and meeting, or excuse me, having a conversation with Mr. Gore, who was very much aware of the situation, aware of the note on the lot. And he clearly indicated to me, he said, "That note is only on there because when that plan was approved, there was not a determination of access." He says, "If you can show sufficient access to the parcel," essentially, that lot would, that note would be rendered a nullity. Those were his words. And I brought that letter over here, I don't know, a week or two ago, thinking that probably the board would double-check with him. You know, it was by representation, but it was clearly based on my conversation with Mr. Gore. So I don't know whether there's anything else that's been added to the file to corroborate my position.
You know, if I get my hands slapped, there's a privileged communication from town council on this subject. Well, it's privileged.
This is out of order, and destroying.
So, he can talk to town council, but I'm saying, we're not letting an applicant know what town council said concerning his application? If that's out of order, let's go to someone to determine when we can release something to the public or to an applicant.
You take a vote. So actually, if you want to...
Okay, then...
So if you want to do that, then the board takes a vote. And if the majority of the board votes to release privileged information, at that point, we can release the information.
How do they correct an issue that was brought, unless we don't think it's an issue?
Chair, it's in our procedures, so if you want to release the information...
No, no, I'm asking, I understand the procedures. I'm asking, how do we get information out to an applicant, so he can address it?
Through the public hearing process.
Oh, and affirmative action by the board.
We would have to make a vote as a board.
All right, I'll make that motion later.
But you're not a voting member.
Okay, then I just strongly suggest you contact Mr. Duffy as to privileged communications.
I would be more than happy to. In fact, I think we later asked the board to do just that.
I thought you did too.
The town council, the planning board, and the building commissioner. I've been to many of these hearings. I mean, if the town's position is it's not a buildable lot, obviously, we'd like to know why they feel that way, because it's not my opinion, and I don't think it's the opinion of Mr. Gore. In fact, I know it's not the opinion of Mr. Gore, and ultimately, it's the building that happens those decisions. But if there is some correspondence from town council, I mean, this is a public hearing, and I think this is the time to air it out. So I'm not familiar with what you're referring to tonight, but apparently, this is like in the file.
And I just want, I'm not a voting member for this hearing. I am a voting member for procedures of the board. So at a later time, I can bring up a procedural issue when it's appropriate.
Mr. Leberts, I read your opinion of council regarding buildability. Did your title research indicate anything regarding the testimony about the ability to expand the road, or something you haven't researched as of yet?
No, my opinion was based on the fact that the property can be accessed from Trotting Park Road. I think there's also another, Harris, what's the name of the other one?
Oh, um...
There's a second road.
Harnessway.
Harnessway. But clearly, if you simply, look, there it is. I mean, there's access from Trotting Park Road, and certainly, a suitable road can be brought in, whether you call it a roadway, whether you call it a driveway, whether you call it a one lot, two lots, or a 40B plan. The access is there. I was provided with a copy of that deed. I think Mr. Patanas questioned whether it was recorded or not. I do have a copy of it. Looks like it's recorded in book 772, page 52. I think Mr. Montero's point is that the abutters' access is actually not over his land, and I think what Mr. Montero is saying is that there is a part of Percival Road that was actually constructed in the wrong place. It's supposed to be a little bit further to the west, am I right?
Correct, correct.
And that seems to be corroborated by the deed in found in book 772, page 52. That 12-foot strip isn't supposed to be touching his land. It is, as you see it here, but it's not supposed to be. So somebody just, you know, this was done a long, long time ago. And if there are some type of prescriptive rights or adverse use rights, I don't think that those should be held against the applicant relative to what he's allowed to do with his own land.
But we don't know if they even exist.
So...
If the rights that you speak of may or may not exist in writing, right?
I'm saying that the deeded rights to Percival Way do not touch the subject property. Percival Way, as you see it on the plan, appears to touch the property, yes, but not, it shouldn't, because that's not the way the deed reads. I don't know, that's a very involved topic, you know. We're here for a plan and so on and so on. I don't know that we're here to resolve title disputes, but I don't...
But you have to admit that's part of it. I mean, that's part of getting to the end result.
I don't know if there are others even disagreeing. I mean, the deed says what it says. And the 12-foot strip was created in 772, page 52, back in 1949, and it doesn't touch this parcel. It does on the ground. And I think Mr. Montero has spent a great deal of time researching this, and he can probably address it even in more detail.
And what I'm proposing is, like I said, the road does meet the standards, if I'm doing a 40B, asking for a waiver. But again, that whole area can be widened out if the board decides it needs to be, so there's not any type of traffic infringement or whatever. We do have stop signs. They mentioned there's no streetlights. There are streetlights in the whole subdivision. I'm bringing in the town water, I'm bringing in gas, so it's going to be its own little, it has its own entity and be all self-sufficient.
Again, to the degree that the abutters' rights sort of merge with the access shown on Mr. Montero's plan, to the degree that is a concern of the board, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but he's clearly indicated to you that concern can be alleviated.
And the access to Trotting Park is just from, is access from Millway or Percival, correct? There's no frontage on Trotting Park?
Yeah, I have frontage on Trotting Park.
Where's the frontage on Trotting Park?
If this is the lot, if you look at this, this is the lot line right here.
Yeah.
It's my, the land, comes right here, and it comes right out. Here's where we brought the road and we shifted it over. So what you're looking at, this whole parcel right here, that lot line, comes right onto Trotting Park Road.
Look at that corner.
There's one of the engineering plans that you have, usually on the first page.
So I think that's this one, so it says like, it says 23, 23 feet, so you have 23 feet on...
Yeah, and if you look at the first one, I take off all of the engineering and all of the elevation, so it's a little bit clearer when you're looking at it, so it's not looking at what the engineers need to see on subdivision plan.
23.59 on Trotting Park. Well, that answers my other question. I was wondering how they were using Trotting Park Road addresses when there was no frontage on Trotting Park Road.
Yeah, correct. And the entrance has a new 25-foot turning radii versus where it had 18 before.
Any other questions from the board? Right now, all right. So I think it might be a good time to turn it over to public comment. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Attorney Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, and I represent the three abutters to the north identified in my letter. I have three matters I want to try to address in my two minutes. First, I want to talk about the road, and I would like to refresh the board's memory and go back in time. This application's been pending now for more than a year. And if you recall, when it first started, the applicant developer was proposing to actually use Percival Road, not only on the north-south part that you see there, but entirely on the east-west part. The idea was to widen the, I could use the mouse. The idea was to widen this part of the road, so that the road would be here for access, and that also was going to provide the developer a through, a secondary means of access. He didn't have rights to that part of the road, and as a result, he had to pull the road back onto his property. And that's where we think all these problems start to begin. By pulling the road back onto the property and creating this internal road rather than a through street, he's running into problems with having a dead end that's too long, not having a cul-de-sac. But most important to my clients is the creation of the conflict between the traffic coming and going from the development versus the traffic coming and going to all the residents up there. That's been the focus of my client's concerns, really, from the beginning. That's the design that was reviewed by the town engineer, and that's the design that was reviewed by the planning board. And both the planning board, as you heard in my letter when Bob Duggan read it, the planning board was not in favor of this. They were against recommending approval because they deemed it to be dangerous. There were turning conflicts, confusion, it's just not a good design as far as traffic is concerned. The town engineer essentially had the same concerns. What I heard tonight was, the peer review apparently says that the internal road is okay as far as a condominium is concerned, but I also heard him say in the same sentence that the roadways do not comply with the regulations or the bylaw. And so I quite don't kind of understand that. Then I heard the peer review say that there was 187 trips that are going to be generated on this non-compliant road. But as I tried to make the point in my letter, there's two things going on here. There's the internal road, that if this were a subdivision, or in this case, it's a condominium, there are concerns with compliance and safety there. But this is a street, by definition, under your, under the subdivision regulations, it's a dirt road. But this is used by other people, and that's the point that I'm trying to make, is where the traffic dumps out onto this road and goes in, there's going to be more than 200 trips per day. And that, let me segue. Developer to try to solve all these problems said, "Oh, okay, I'm not going to have a subdivision anymore. I'm going to call it a condominium, and I'm going to call it a common driveway." And I made some technical arguments in my letter that this doesn't meet the definition. But the real important point to take away from that is, that was an effort to try to get away from having to ask for waivers from the too-long of a street, the lack of turnaround, and the traffic problems here. But what that doesn't solve is, he can't call this a common driveway, because this is a street that serves other neighborhoods. And that is the part that has to comply, in our contention, with the regulations above all, and we do not think that he has shown that. And now, tonight, for the very first time, we've heard a new proposal, and again, bearing in mind, this project's been before you for a year, and you've seen it being pulled onto the property. The last time we were here, you saw him having plants in the middle of the road to try to create a solution to the traffic conflict. He didn't have the right to do that, so those have been removed. Now, tonight, for the first time, I heard all about reconfiguring this road. I heard about reviewing deeds, I heard about property rights, I heard about road widths, but I've not seen anything in writing. And with all due respect to the developer, he's not an attorney, he can't give opinions about legal deeds, he's not a traffic engineer, he can't give opinions about safety. And we would ask that the board, ask that this information be reviewed by the town engineer and by the planning board, and have everything that Mr. Montero said tonight put in writing, so other people can take a look at it. Those are our primary concerns. You've heard my clients say it, you've heard me say it. They're very, very concerned with having to live with this particular road configuration, with the level of traffic that's being proposed to be added to the existing traffic. Two other quick points, I know I have a short amount of time. The first paragraph of my letter talks about the waivers. We're still unconvinced that there's a complete application. I know one of the board members was asking about whether the list is complete. The list I've seen from the developer is a typewritten page that has a couple of paragraphs on it. That particular list has compound requests, does not refer to the specific provisions of the zoning bylaw that are being asked to be waived, so it's really hard to tell how many waivers he's actually asking for. And that's more than a technical matter, because he has to show justification for each waiver he's asking for. And so you need to have a clear understanding of what is each waiver, how many waivers, why is he asking for it, and what's the justification. I can't figure it out, because when I go to the peer review spreadsheet, I see a lot more waivers on there than I see on Mr. Montero's list. And so I would ask the board for confirmation that that's correct, and have it being completed. The final thing I want to say tonight has to do with the environmental concerns. I've said it before, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but this is in the watershed resource protection area, the coastal ponds overlay district. There's supposed to be a wildlife corridor, there's none shown, there's been no justification as to why it hasn't been shown. There is supposed to be a sewer treatment plant for this particular development, or denitrifying septic systems. And the developer has simply said, "I'm going to have 16 Title V septic systems." He's provided you no justification as to why he has not tried to comply with the regulations, and he's provided no justification for that waiver, and we would ask you to look very, very carefully at all these things. I think that's it. I come with a prepared statement every time, but every time we come, there's a whole bunch of new information, so I have to kind of go on the fly. I apologize for that. Are there any questions from the board members?
Thank you, Attorney Wall. We'll see if there's any questions for you. Anyone? No questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Wall. Any other members of the public have any questions, comments, or concerns? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Pat Harris. I live at 181 Percival Road, which abuts the property. I just wanted to express the frustration that I think a lot of people listening to this presentation today had because there's a lot of representations made that are, in a legal term, hearsay. There's no paperwork to back up a substantiate. For example, the peer reviewer wrote a number of times on his spreadsheet that he's heard from the developer that the fire department is okay with the emergency access. I've never seen anything in writing from the fire department. He's made representations as to, his attorney's made representations as to Eladio Gore's communications. Again, I would like to see it from the horse's mouth. We've been told on a number of occasions that Mr. Montero intends to bring gas line into that neighborhood. I know from personal experience, because I'm doing some renovation, I called in Star, asked if I could have gas line put in front of my house. They said no, and I said, well, that's interesting because there's a developer in town who's saying that he's gonna serve a 16, and she said, well, that's a pipe drain. So I'd like to see that in writing as well. I will, for a number of reasons. He's now said that Scott Schulter has told him that the town owns certain portions of this roadway. We need to hear from Scott Schulter. And the other issue and point that I would like to make is I'm still very confused about the representations being made concerning line of sight. He says that it's shown on this plan. These plans, I've never seen plans like the plans have been submitted repeatedly in this project. I can't make it out. And then secondarily, the line of sight for exiting the development and going on to the current portions of Percival Road, and that portion does run east-west, and then the north-south portion is a private easement on my and my neighbor's property, but we also, unlike, has been represented tonight, have right of access and passage over that road, and I would like the opportunity for our, my attorney, to submit an analysis in response to some written analysis as to the representations made here. I believe what I just heard is that the developer is saying he's gonna allow us to go on that portion of Percival Road after he widens it. No, we have history title to that portion that runs back up into what is Cardozo Lane now, was a straight line, and our predecessor in title owned their rectangular lot that abuts all of the Gonzo's property, and he granted that 12-foot right easement over our property so it could be divided down the road. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other public comments tonight?
Hi, I'm Jen. I'm the other side of the proposed, proposed project.
What's your last name, Jen?
I'm Scala.
And your address, please.
Six Harness Drive and 10 Harness Drive.
Thank you.
And my aunt's also in a butter. She's 21 Trotting Lane, and we have daycares, and I know about subsidies. Half my daycare is subsidies, half my mom's, half my aunt's, so I know, and I'm all for affordable housing, but I just don't feel that four houses is gonna benefit anybody. If you want to make an affordable project, you know, for housing, by all means, but this project in this area is gonna be dangerous. I'm at three different bus stops every day. When I tell you the cars fly down Trotting Park Road, there's so much traffic, we stand, a lady lets us stand in a driveway just to not get run over. If you add these, what do they say, three-bedroom housings, and you say there's only gonna be one car to each house, what's the chances of that? Chance that you're gonna have two or maybe three, or two and a motorcycle, and you're gonna be in and out. These people, I don't know what the proposed price is, but I'm assuming it's gonna be big, like, 'cause you guys approved a project across on Trotting Park Road, those new condos that are there, they've been sold, resold, and sold. We have two condo projects at the bottom by McDonald's. Those also have 40Bs in them, there's the 40B building, the blue one right across, and then there's the little cottages behind it. We have those two, so all in our area, and even like on Mayor's Pond, within a mile, we have more 40B projects or condos or whatever than the whole town. I just feel like you're shoving it all on us, but in reality, like, I've lived there for 44 years. There's box turtles out there, there's hawk nests, there's coyotes, we have lots of, you know, this is gonna kill our neighborhood. I live on the dead end part, and we're going through hell. We've been chased with the kids by bobcats. We, at the end of my street, there's a huge pile of crap now that they've taken tree, not, not this man, he hasn't, I don't know him, but they piled it in where our storm drain is, like, it's awful. The owner of the property has threatened my aunt, the police had to come. It's been awful. Our kids used to use this little path to get through, and they had to like block us out, it's just, like, it's just, I don't know, and I just feel like this is, and a stop sign is not gonna help this, like, the buses, they tell our kids, stay back, we have to wait till the bus gives the thumbs up, not just to give the thumbs up, just to make sure, Trotting Park is so full of traffic that, I mean, like I said, I, since I was two, I've lived there, and I just think this is gonna be a disaster. When we had the fire truck come, 'cause I have a neighbor who had a fire, the fire truck couldn't get in with the police car that was coming. It's just, it's super, like, if you guys drive down, it's super congested, there's lots of people backing out and going in, there's a preschool there. It's just not a good spot, not a good place for all this, and I just don't understand how, I, if the trash truck is coming down Trotting Park and I'm walking with my kids or the daycare kids, I can't get by. The trash truck waits for us to go by, there's just no, it's gonna be a, and I'm all for small businesses making money. I'm not against the developer, I'm not against him, not against anybody. I'm just telling you, this is gonna be an absolute nightmare. Never mind our, I mean, we have blue herring in the spring, they come to our house, they have their babies, they, my two minutes up. I just had to tell you.
Just about.
I'm sorry, like, I.
No worries.
It's just gonna be, I mean, if you wanted to put two houses there, or you, I mean, go for it, but 14 houses or whatever in this little tiny narrow lot with no access, it's, our neighborhood's gonna be, or give us a couple of years to like sell our house, you know what I mean, to get out of there, but the other thing is, they're gonna take 40 feet on this side to make a road bigger, then at least give us a 40-foot buffer of straight trees so that we don't have, you know, and how are we gonna run our businesses when they're in the construction this whole time? Like, we're right there, and if you need the turtle video, my neighbor Debbie Witter, she has the video, and she knows where the turtle is, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for, thank you. Anyone else? Last call for public comment. Anyone else at all? Alright, that does it for public comment for the night. Back to the board.
Yeah, so I just, I guess I have a question. So, so Ms. Montero, I found your waiver list from August 18th. Is that the current one? So are they less than the 18th?
Yeah.
So on the, so on the 18th, you listed five.
It's currently four, I believe.
So, no, I mean.
Should be on the top.
Yeah, you know, the file's coming apart, it's so big. Let me just, I'll pull up what he said and see. So let's just go by there. So you were asking for a waiver of length of road 'cause it exceeds the 500 lineal feet, and the private driver does have a T turnaround. That's, that's still correct. You said.
Mr. Montero, if you're gonna be commenting, if you could come back to the podium, please.
Yeah, if you could, if you could, podium. And then, you're asking for a waiver on individual units. The units will have an exclusive use area as per plan, including individual septic systems in lieu of all units on entire parcel as a common area, but you haven't asked for a waiver regarding the septic systems. Are you asking for a waiver on the septic systems?
Yes, and when, when, if you look at the recommendation when we first did it, it went to the Board of Health, and Scott McGann said it's fine on me doing the Title V.
No, that's okay, but, but for us, if that's a waiver we have to give you.
Yes.
Even if Scott says, that's what I'm okay.
Yes.
That, we have to see that.
Okay.
We're the ones that say we allow the waiver or not versus the Health Department, 'cause in these cases, we stand in for every single department, so if that's a waiver you need, we need to get that added to the list.
Yes.
Now, you're asking for a wildlife corridor waiver 'cause no endangered species in your referring, so you're asking not to have any wildlife corridor go through the property?
No, I'm saying there isn't any, and you do have the report, I think it was dated March 4th of 2021, where I hired an engineer, and you have a full report on that stating that.
So that's on the endangered species, but where there's all, where it's in a wildlife corridor area, based on that, you're asking that there not be a wildlife corridor, correct?
I'm asking for a wa, waiver on that, yes.
Of the wildlife corridor itself.
'Cause I.
And then there was a waiver for the sidewalks. I think tonight you have an idea of what the difference is in the sidewalk, and then back then, and I think this is where the one that was removed, there was a waiver on a four-foot berm?
Yes, and the reason why I took that off, because with the storm drainage, it would.
You didn't need it anymore, so that, so that's.
We didn't need it, but it'll be a berm, but it has to be open for the storm drainage to go in, so I didn't want to have that whole thing waived, and I worked with peer engineer on that.
So right now, between the four current ones you have, you'd have to add the one on the septic and any other waiver that you think, whether another department said they were okay with it or not, we have to have it on the list if you need it as a waiver.
Okay.
Because we have to vote on everyone individually.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only question I had to that. I just want to make sure we have the right lists.
Alright. Thanks for clarifying. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Do you have an update from Mass Housing to change your tenure from the homeownership to the condo?
The, I do not have that, but the, they base their information on what I was asking for when I, when I applied for the Mass Housing, was the 16 units, whether it was individual homes or houses. They said that doesn't change because all they look at is for, they give you the approvals, how many units you're going for.
Okay, 'cause usually if there's a change in tenure, they wanna be notified of that.
So we would need that though, wouldn't we, Maureen?
I mean, is appropriate to check with them and make sure that.
Only because if there's a change in tenure, it changes how the, how the, the project is set up with fees and anything else.
Would it be appropriate for Mr. Montero to ask for the change in tenure?
Well, he, he would have to go to Mass Housing.
That's what I'm saying.
And get them to say that.
It's his respons, yeah, that's what I meant, rather than ours.
So I think we are looking at continuance here based upon our discussion tonight, and...
Aren't we close to, when does, we have to get a?
So we would have to have an extension signed tonight. The next available meeting date would be January 27th. I don't know what the other board members are needing, but we need something from somebody to be at the town of what that ownership is of that parcel of land next to the road to see if it can be widened or not, and also that the town defines that as a road or a street versus a private way.
Right, I mean, I mean, there were, just briefly, Bob, there were multiple things brought up tonight that, you know, were verbal, there's nothing in the file to back that up.
Yeah, all of that has to be submitted by.
The engineering department.
Eladio.
Building Commissioner. Was there an issue with the fire department as well in terms of access, or?
You can refer to peer review because they reviewed the, the T that we did on there, so, I mean.
We have, we had a comment on it. Yes, we wanted to see it. I know it was mentioned, but we wanna see that letter from the fire department that you're okay with.
Well, that's what we need, yeah. We need a letter from the fire department.
Since you're up there, there was, there was two testimony. Were some of, were some of your reports over the phone with the, with the applicant?
No, we never had a phone, I mean, only one time we had a phone call, but not regarding this.
Okay, good.
I don't know if Mr. Montero wants to have a discussion with the abutting parcel of Gonzo's, but where we have to have that 150-foot of sight distance, would he be willing to?
It's, it's on there.
Yeah, he showed that.
The 150, it's on there.
No, I'm talking about the fencing, it's the, it's somebody else's land.
Oh, I mean, it's.
Because if somebody built something there, then the.
Yeah, but Bob, we got into this before. That has nothing to do with us, his outside negotiations with the abutters.
Oh, no, I understand that, I'm just saying without that, there's no clear sight distance.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's.
I mean, you have to have the 150-foot of sight distance. If that's not there, then it's a safety hazard.
But most of what you're looking at is, is for the actual trees that are, that are there that need to come down, not so much the fence. Fence is only about four feet high.
Well, the comment from the peer engineer was.
Oh, engineer's here. Do you think defense is an issue?
You can see through the fence right now, it's all like a wire.
Unless somebody changes it to a.
Changes the stockade fence, then you can obscure it, so I just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Is there anything else in terms of the next time? Are there the deeds, maybe?
Yep, it's the middle of the, the full deed.
Showing the book and page, I know there were copies were provided, but seeing a book and page from the registry would help us out. Anything else?
Question in the back.
I mean, I guess the other part, too, is that if the zoning board is standing in for the planning board, the requirements of the planning board are by the state, so if the zoning board is anticipated to vote in instead of the planning board regarding access, et cetera, that plan needs to be presented to the board.
I'm not following you, but maybe I can.
Just to have the, the notation of buildability removed.
Yeah, well, that, that wouldn't happen before January 27th, but the point is with the land, is that if there was a single-family home on there, all they have to do is have a driveway permit for a 15-foot wide permit either to come on Harness Way or to come on Trotting Park Road, and you can get a building permit for a single family.
Harness Drive is private.
There's no public comment and no.
Sorry?
No, it's alright.
So, I mean, it's, that, that's, that was the stipulation behind the whole thing is that, I do, you do have access from what Mr. Gore has stated, if it was one house built on there, I do have a right to put a driveway on my own property. Montero stipulated that. I'm sorry? You said it was stipulated, by whom?
Mr. Gore in the letter with Mr. Levert's presented, but what I'm getting at is.
I didn't, I didn't see anything from Mr. Gore.
No, what, no, what, what, no, what I'm stating is.
He was referencing a hearsay conversation, not.
I asked Mr. Gore to be here tonight. Apparently, he just doesn't routinely come to these meetings. I'm very confident in his opinion, I asked him to be here. He's not here. I brought the letter over some weeks ago, hoping that maybe the board would, you know, seek input from Mr. Gore. Apparently, it hasn't been done. I, I don't know what more I can do. I've spoken with him. I have an opinion. I've given you what I believe to be his opinion, but somebody has to double-check.
And you understand why we, we have to be a little more direct with the questioning because this all goes into a record, a public record.
Right. What, what Mr. Montero is saying is that as it sits right now, without any need to go to the planning board, he'd be able to get a permit for a single-family home.
But this isn't one.
I understand that, but it goes to the issue of is the parcel buildable, or what does that note mean where it says it's not a buildable lot? If it's buildable for a single-family home per Mr. Gore, then it's, then it's buildable. Buildable is buildable, not buildable for this, that, or the next thing, but I understand where you're coming. I, I myself was disappointed. I wanted Mr. Gore to be here tonight.
Me, too.
I would suggest you go back and listen to some prior planning board meetings on parcels that were initially zoned as single-family and then were changed later. They have a deep concern about parcels that have originally single-family but could be redeveloped.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't yet. I, I get it, it's a 5.46 acre parcel with access to Trotting Park Road. I know there's a note on the plan, but I have very little doubt that you could build a house on it, based on my conversations with the building department, but I would ask this board to just verify what I'm telling you. Don't take it from me, take it from your own building commissioner.
No, so I just.
If I could, Bob. And Attorney Levert, so I'm sure you know this, but just for members of the public who are here tonight, you know, in terms of reaching out to Mr. Gore himself, the board can only do things through the public hearing process. It's not through email or through any back channel, so, I mean, here, right.
But Mr. Gore could put a letter into the file and make it part of the public hearing process.
Certainly could, certainly could, but we can't, we can't direct that outside, outside of the public hearing process. We can certainly do it now.
Good point, Scott. At his request.
Right.
So just a quick question for Attorney Levert. So on, on an A and R, who, who has the purview to actually remove the A and R? Is it just the planning board, or can the building commissioner do that?
I believe it's the planning board, but I, but to get back to our earlier debate, I don't think Mr. Gore would require it, so in other words, it doesn't have to be removed from the plan, but if you want it removed from the plan, that would be the planning board.
Right, thank you.
I don't think anybody, any other board or the building commissioner can simply take it upon themselves to.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I just...
In that case, that would be this board because we act instead of the planning board.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but we're not here subdividing that land any further. We're not here, you know, for, for that purpose. We're here for, for 40B. I think the planning board indicated that if that note had to be removed, that they are the board to do it. I suppose to your point, here we are. I still think it's a planning board. That would be a planning board application, but I don't think it's required based on my conversations with Mr. Gore.
So, you're not going to request it?
Well, I'll, 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 we'll see what happens. I mean, I'll ask Mr. Gore if he can chime in and does it need to be done if, obviously...
He would certainly behoove you to get that affirmation, Attorney Levert.
Okay. Done, done. We'll do it. I don't mean to be difficult in any way at all. I mean, if, we'll, we'll see what, what needs to be done.
Anything else?
Sir.
And Mr. Montero, you are amenable to signing an extension since multiple things to address?
Do you want to vote?
Yeah, we'll vote first. So, then I would make a motion to continue this hearing to January 27th, 2022.
So, move.
All right, so that's Bob with the motion and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. House is unanimously. Mr. Montero signing the extension.
Yeah, just give him a moment.
Yeah, it might be Monday.
All right, Mr. Montero, thank you for your time tonight, and this hearing has been continued to January 27th, 2022. See you back in the new year. We'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Good idea.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Montero, thank you for your time tonight, and this hearing has been continued to January 27th, 2022. See you back in the new year. We'll take, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Good idea.
Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone, onto our second continuation for the night. We have application 85-21, Seacoast Tower Development LLC, 50 Highfield Drive in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing guide tower and replace with a new tower. Existing antennas and equipment will be transferred to the replacement tower.
Which we've never opened, so...
Which we, thank you, Bob, which we have not opened, so we'll let Bob read everything in for the record, and we'll get going on the presentation.
All right, so, application number 85-21, Seacoast Tower Development LLC, 270 Communication Way, Unit 7B, Hyannis, Mass. Supply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-23E. Article 5, Article 12, the code of Falmouth, remove the existing guide tower and replace with new tower. Existing antennas and equipment will be transferred to the replacement tower. The subject property is 50 Highfield Drive, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From Concom, the project appears to be located outside of conservation jurisdiction. From engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. This is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any storm or run-up to public property, abutters of public rights of way. We recently assigned an address to this facility. It is 58C, Highfield Drive. Catches a copy of the assignment for the applicant. So, on any approval, we need to do, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this facility per subsection 991. A fixing of legible numbers are required in time limit for compliance. Assessment department, no comment. Health department, no comment. Water department, no comment. Planning board, no comment. I don't think there is a...
What's that?
I thought we had one letter. I thought we had the butters, though. Is there, is there butters over here?
Yes.
I remember reading it.
Yeah. No, I think, wait a second. Yeah, is it the one with all the, all the photos? Okay. The town of Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals from the Highfield Hillside Condominium Trust, HHCT, and Highfield Hillside Neighborhood Association, HHNA. Regarding abutter opposition, questions and concerns to the application from Seaside Tower Development for proposed wireless communication facility replacement tower. Please be advised that the HHCT and HHNA are challenging the application for special permit by Seacoast Tower Development LLC. Replace an existing wireless communications tower with a larger one. As abutters to the property, we have three main concerns and are asking for clarification on several points we would like to make the ZBA aware of omissions and errors in the application. Our first and main concern is the statement from the applicant on page three. Paragraph three of the proposal that claims the facility will have no negative impacts on property valves in the area. Due to the information provided in the application, we strongly disagree with this statement. According to the application's schematics, the new structure will have an intimidating and imposing increase of presence due to the increase in height, width, and more equipment installed at the sightline level. This opinion is based on what we do see, is based on what we do see in the application, but there's also information that should be listed but appears missing. No topographic map with existing and proposed ground level elevations, and a lack of clarity on the ground level location, whether the change would be at an elevation that would trigger a referral to the Cape Cod Commission. Our second concern is the lack of documentation that increasing the height of the proposed replacement tower will in fact provide better service to the sub-tenants in the community. The application asserts that the replacement arises from inadequate cellphone coverage and dropped 911 calls in the area, yet the applicant offers no concrete evidence of this as a problem within the community. In fact, during a recent storm and power outage, the only publicly reported cellphone outage information was from the town of Barnstable, and that outage was due to fiber optic cables on poles being damaged. Third concern is the lack of evidence that the proposed replacement tower will not negatively impact health and safety and character of the neighborhood or town, et cetera. We cite the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Health concerns may not be considered so long as the emissions comply with the applicable standards of the FCC. There's a lack of documentation regarding the emissions produced by the increased equipment, and therefore, no way to be sure that these increased services will not exceed these standards. There will no doubt be an increase in radiation emissions from the broadcast signal from the new tower and its updated equipment. The original approved tower was for receiving television and radio signals only. There was no transmission of single, of signals from the tower to tower as cellphones did not yet exist. The use of the tower has changed, and along with it, emissions increased, but they have not been requested, measured, or accounted for by any of the responsible parties involved. We also want to point out that the applicant has only two of seven residential abutters listed on the application and is measuring the lot line from the lot furthest away from the project, not the closest. Other related documentation that is missing from the application are included but erroneous. Sheet S1 is missing. Sheet C1 lists only Ostroff at 45 Highfield Drive. This is a six-unit residential condominium named Highfield Hillside Townhouse Condominium Trust. The plan suggests that there are only two abutting nearby residential dwellings. Sheet C, Sheet C1 does not identify the setback distances to Lot 5386. We would also like to provide the ZBA with the information on the not-so-good neighbor conduct of the applicant's customers and contractors. Cabling subcontractor AT&amp;T customer trenched along the private right of way and across the recent full-depth replacement paved Highfield Drive. Damage occurred to both the subsurface drainage system and to the roadway surface. Private right-of-way abutters were notified, and the contractor made no attempt to repair the damaged subsurface drainage or the temporarily patched asphalt roadway. See attached photos. The current structure based on original town approvals is already an offending and non-conforming structure. We submit that there is also no evidence of the need for this increased service and the sole purpose of the applicant. Replacing this tower is to add customers and profits to the value of their business due to the detriment of the value and possible safety of the abutted property. We seek either a denial of the special permit or clarification on the following details of the proposal and possible referral to the Cape Cod Commission to oversee the permitting decision and/or execution of the project. Requested clarifications associated with the Board of Appeals application number 0085-21A. The height of the proposed replacement tower, specifics of the less C antenna and equipment upgrades referenced, and potential unfavorable impacts on both the electrical service along the private right-of-way and on the health and safety of the seven nearby residential dwellings. And then they give measurements. B, Falmouth, ZBA approved a communication tower not to exceed 160 feet AGL under ZBA Appeal Number 2886, recorded, booked 2677 and 265 on 3/23/1978. If the existing tower is already 174 feet after special permitting to increase size, will this tower continue to grow as needed, and who is best to decide what is needed? C, proposed replacement tower height. I, will the replacement tower ground level remain at the elevated mound topography currently present as an existing condition? Two, has the, has the existing tower been surveyed to verify the actual height? Three, who will verify the replacement tower height to document the as-built condition to confirm compliance with both the special permit and any applicable DRI requirements? D, the proposed replacement tower additional antenna and associated equipment. What is the current electrical load of the existing less C antenna and associated equipment? What is the anticipated electric load of the proposed upgrades, less C antenna and associated equipment? Has the plan been reviewed with Eversource to confirm that the existing transformers and underground transmission wires along the private right-of-way Highfield Drive can support the planned installation? What is the current RF wave emission level of the existing less C antenna configuration? What is the projected RF wave emission level of proposed less C antenna configuration? E, provide documentation to support the following assertions. The facility will not adversely impact adjacent properties and neighborhoods. The facility will not be a threat to public health, safety, and welfare. The facility will have no negative impacts on property valves in the area. F, this parcel is subject to deed use restrictions. Quick claim D, recorded in Book 1985, page 167 on 12/31/73. Beyond compliance with applicable CCC requirements and zoning bylaws, specifically, equally important to maintain and preserve the natural wooded beauty of the area conveyed. I, a more detailed site plan which includes existing and proposed landscaping modifications should be included in the special permit modification application. And G, what the implications of the salt pond, coastal pond, overlay district, and wildlife corridor. And then they attach the specific documentation of the current tower proximity to abutters, and then photographs of the subcontractor damage to the private road. And that is it.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E.
I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Seacoast Tower Development LLC. First off, I wanted to thank the board for accommodating my schedule last month and continuing to this evening. In the interim, we did receive the letter that you just read from the planning department. We received it last week. So I'm going to run through the project, and then I can address kind of how we can deal with the letter. So, Seacoast Tower Development LLC owns the tower at the site. It's a hundred, a hundred-and-seventy-foot guide tower. By guide tower, there are wires coming off the tower to support it, connected to guy anchors on the ground. As you'll hear this evening, we are going to be revising our plans to make it a hundred-and-eighty-foot tower rather than a hundred-and-ninety-foot tower, and I'll explain that in one second. To give the board a sense of what we're looking at, the, this is an aerial view of the, of fifty Highfield. It's in the single, single residential A. The tower, the guide tower that I mentioned, is in the center of that red circle. I'm not sure it's a circle, but I did my best by hand. As I mentioned, the tower is a hundred-and-seventy feet. It was originally approved at a hundred-and-sixty feet. The underlying property is owned by the Cape Cod Symphony and Conservatory of Music and Arts, Inc. I'm going to switch to the plans if I can pull this off. So this is, this is the location of the existing, these are the current conditions, the location of the existing tower. We've put the setbacks up on the, on the plans. We're at least two-hundred-and-twenty-four feet from the closest property line. We do have the elevations on the plans, and on the next sheet, we do provide some additional detail on the elevation. The current tower here sits at an elevation of about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet. Because of the questions raised, we are revising our plans, as I said, to lower the height of the tower, and we'll keep the tower at the same ground elevation of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven feet. And hopefully, when we come back in January, we can, we'll have revised plans for the board to review. In fact, I delivered them this evening, but didn't want to introduce them at the last minute, so that the board has a chance to, to review. On the elevation, this is the existing, elevation to the left, this is the existing guide wire. The tower currently has AT&amp;T and T-Mobile attached to it. AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have both expressed frustration with the tower owner because they can't do their typical upgrades. This tower wasn't necessarily designed for two thousand twenty-one wireless infrastructure. So in order to accommodate AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, and now, and you'll see when you get your packet for next month, the new market entry called Dish Wireless has also expressed an interest in going on the new tower. The new tower, as I said, will be one-hundred-and-eighty feet at the same ground elevation as the existing. So as I just mentioned, Dish is going to be a new, you know, a new entry into the market and will attach to the tower. AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have, again, expressed their frustration that they can't upgrade their antennas and their equipment. In this instance, the ground equipment will remain in place. The new tower will be approximately forty-one feet from the existing tower. The existing tower and the guy wires and anchors will be removed once the project's complete. In your packet, you should have letters of support from T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. We will add Dish's letter, which they provided to us this afternoon, in your packet for next hearing. Likewise, the Cape Arts and Entertainment provide the letter of support, and they, they obtain financial benefit from the carriers and the rents that are received from the tower owner to support their mission. And you can, you know, that letter will be available in your packet also. So we're here seeking a special permit to replace the existing tower. The existing tower's been there for over forty years. It was originally approved at a hundred-and-sixty feet. However, in nineteen ninety-eight, this board also granted relief to extend the tower by twenty feet. So the tower could actually have been extended to the hundred-and-eighty feet, but it wasn't going to be rebuilt, which is why we're here this evening for a new special permit. With respect to the Cape Cod Commission, in nineteen ninety-seven, they issued their technical bulletin on wireless infrastructure. Anything above thirty-five feet requires a mandatory referral as a development of regional impact. However, there is an exception, an exception for existing towers being replaced on the same site, as long as they don't go twenty feet higher. So to keep with that exemption, we propose lowering the tower by ten feet because it was, it was extended once, as I said, in nineteen ninety-eight. So we went from one-sixty to one-seventy. We're going to propose going to one-eighty, and that will keep us within that twenty-foot limitation. Special permit standards for this board with respect to the proposed application that, to consider the adequacy of the site with respect to the size. Now, this is a eighteen-acre parcel. If you remember the overview that I showed, that the tower's located in the middle, it's heavily vegetated, so there's not much visibility. Suitability for the site for the proposed use, it's been approved by this board for the tower forty years ago, and in fact, was extended, or approval to extend it in nineteen ninety-eight. You know, there are carriers already existing at the site. There'll be no impact on traffic flow, it'll remain the same because the carriers will be upgrading. The addition may be the addition of Dish, once they install and maintain their facility. The impact on the neighborhood, visual character, including views and vistas, I'll talk about in a second. We have no sewerage. Utilities are adequate. The carriers are all operating currently. We're not, we're not dealing with any housing, whether it be affordable or otherwise. So those terms are just not applicable. So, understanding that the tower would be taller, we've been attempting to conduct what we call a balloon test. A balloon test would basically be, we go to the site, fly a balloon, get an understanding of what the, what the visibility would be like. Unfortunately, with the winds and the proximity of the guy wires, we haven't been able to accomplish that. We received a letter from some of the abutters, and as you'll see in my correspondence, addressing each of those objections or clarifications, we'd like to work with the board to schedule a crane test so we can do away with, you know, the balloon test, the winds, et cetera. So what we'd like to get out of this evening is to schedule that balloon test so that all stake, all stakeholders know when it will occur. If there are any complications, we'll have an alternative date, and then we can see exactly what the visual impact might be. We think it's going to be very minimal, because net-net, we're doing a ten-foot increase in height, and we're removing a tower that, very old guy wires. And typically, when I come in with a guy wire replacement, everybody wants the tower and the guy wires gone. Likewise, we can't, you know, do a real estate study until the real estate appraiser can take a look at the visual impact. So, you know, we have engaged a real estate expert. Once the crane test takes place, he'll review the results of it, and we'll deliver his report to the board. With respect to emissions, so, Seacoast Tower owns the tower. They don't transmit emissions, they're not a provider of service. So we don't know what kind of power's going in, we don't know what kind of power's coming out. They're, you know, they're committed under their licenses to comply with the FCC standards. So what we've done is we've commissioned, Seacoast itself has commissioned an emissions study, where we will hire the company to go out, I think that may have been done this afternoon. They will go out and take actual measurements so that we can address any of the concerns relating to existing conditions. As I said, we're going to revise our plans to lower by ten feet so that we can stay within that twenty-foot exemption provided in the Cape Cod Commission technical bulletin. So as you'll see in your packet once you receive them, and, you know, I've provided copies this evening, I do have a point-by-point response to the abutters' concerns, providing clarifications, disputing what we think is erroneous. And if any of the abutters could give me an email address or get in touch with me, we can certainly, you know, have a conversation. I could provide that directly, while they can get it from Ashley tomorrow, no doubt. As I mentioned, there is a topo map of the site. It's, I think we have it listed at a hundred-and-twenty-five foot above mean sea level, but the new plans will show it one-twenty-seven, which is the elevation of the existing, and the proposed will likewise be at one-twenty-seven. Once we do the crane test, we will be able to provide the analysis on the impact on property values, the need for the height increase. The carriers need to upgrade their site. They're either going to, you know, build a new tower somewhere, possibly close by, or, you know, upgrade where they are. They can't upgrade where we are, where, you know, they're currently located, so they would have to seek some other additional location, some other tower. The towers don't exist. This is a good trade-off, because we put one up, we take one down. With respect to sheets S-one missing, that was just an error in the title page. That's a construction-level detail that we typically don't do with the, on our zoning drawings. We'll correct that when we submit the revised plans. Likewise, with the trenching, we haven't heard of that until this, you know, frankly, we didn't expect we would have any opposition this evening, but, you know, when we saw the letter, we have not heard anything about the trenching. Likewise, they should contact us as the property owner. We can certainly get in touch with our tenants, or, you know, they can contact AT&amp;T if it was one of their subcontractors. I'm not exactly sure where that stands, but if, if we can be of assistance, we'll be of assistance. So a few things I usually run into with, you know, tower development. You know, the tower would be available to provide space for town public safety. We're not aware that there's a need, but would certainly entertain town equipment on the new tower. The new tower will be structurally stronger, be able to accommodate more. Right now, you wouldn't be able to attach to the existing tower, but that's just something offered and typically discussed at these hearings. We did provide this evening an FAA determination that no lighting is required. I know that's another big issue for abutters and zoning boards, and you'll have that in your packet also. There is one, I understand, backup power generator for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T provides first-net service, so they harden their sites with generators. I understand that that was approved through the building permit process a short time ago, but that's the only generator we're aware of. And likewise, we would have a discussion with the board about removal bonds, a removal bond for the, for the proposed tower. So with that, I think we have a means to address each and all of the concerns. We think this is a low-impact, low-visibility project, since there is an existing hundred-and-sixty-foot tower, actually, it's this, an existing hundred-and-seventy-foot tower with guy wires. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board. I did leave a significant package to be distributed to the board, so that you have time to consider it, and we can deal with those issues in January. Likewise, we'd need to discuss scheduling the crane test. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. And if I didn't already do so, I'll be appointing Jerry as a voting member on this. I got through a lot of, got through a lot of reading there. I'm not sure if I did it yet. But Jerry, do you have anything?
I had a question. You said you were going to do existing emission tests, RF. What's the proposed, and what's the standard? Will that come in the report?
Well, we don't know what the proposed is going to be, because each carrier, I mean, we're zoning the tower, so we're not, you know, here, we're not AT&amp;T, we're not T-Mobile. Whatever process they go through with the town, whether it be a building permit or some sign of, kind of zoning process, they could demonstrate compliance, you know, at that time.
I'm assuming, and I probably shouldn't assume, that the question on RF refers to some type of public health issue or anything else. If, that could be addressed, whether it's, what the issue is. And I know what you're saying, that's not up to you, but we're approving theoretically, if we approve it, emissions, future emissions, that we don't know what they're going to be.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be approving future emissions, because we're seeking to rebuild the tower. But I think, you know, abutters have a right to know what's occurring there right now. So we're going to take actual field membership, field measurements. I wouldn't be here this evening if I wasn't entirely confident that those will come in at a very low number and in full compliance. When AT&amp;T or T-Mobile go to attach, and I represent, you know, all of those companies also, they will demonstrate to the town that, you know, they're in compliance with their attachments, but there's no, they would give you a radio frequency report for their modifications, assuming you require one, or if the building official requests one. We just don't control the emissions, but we can produce something that shows existing. And they have to comply. The other thing is, they must comply.
Now, I always bring it up, because an abutter brought it up, and, yep, I wanted clarification. So, nothing further, just.
All right, thanks, Jerry. James?
No questions, just a comment, if that's all right, for any abutters. I would reach out to counsel. There's very little that a zoning board can do under the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six, so if you have a counsel who's offered to address your issues or concerns, I would reach out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Scott?
Just a minor question. You said there'd be no lighting. Obviously, there's going to be a safety light at the top.
There's not. So the FAA is not requiring lighting and marking, so there, there won't be a light at the top. Most towers are not lit typically when you get up to two-hundred-foot, two-hundred-foot level on a tower, or if you're in close proximity to an airport, and that's why we do the FCC, the FAA study, and their determination came back, no lighting, no marking.
Thanks, Scott.
You don't have that in your packet yet, but it's, rest assured, it's, it's sitting on the desk.
Paul?
Do you know anything about the mention of deed use restriction?
I don't.
I guess this wouldn't be for the applicant, for the board. They've mentioned a book and page of a deed, so maybe we can get a copy of the deed to see what they're referring to.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the tower's been there for forty-something years. I don't know what kind of deed restriction could be in place, but it's a title issue. If there's a copy of the deed, we'll look at it.
Anything else, Paul? No. Scott?
Looking forward to the additional information.
All right. All right, we'll turn it over to public comment. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Anyone at all? Next time? All right.
If I could, if I could just ask if there are abutters here, if they could either catch me in the hallway, I'll give them my card, and we, none of this is not, it's all resolvable, I guess.
All right, so last call for public comment. Attorney is making the representation that he'll see in the hallway.
So, on the crane or balloon test, we want to have that before we have the next hearing. So do you have an idea of timing?
We can, we're ready to, I mean, we can do it, I mean, do you, I, so, I do this a lot.
Yeah.
Do you want a weekend or a weekday?
We're going to continue this anyway, so what are we looking at, a continuation date, and then maybe we can?
Right, so we would be looking at February ten for the board's meeting date, so you just?
What's the date we're meeting, we're meeting for our?
The twenty-ninth of January.
That's a Saturday. For our workshop.
The twenty-ninth is a Saturday?
Right, that morning. So do you want to schedule it for that day and go out after?
I had a procedural question. The board is going to review this in its entire, oh, we might have a quorum there, we might not. It's not going to be a continuation of the public hearing. If the public shows up, in the past, it's by my understanding, they're not allowed to ask questions. Is this going to be a site visit by the board?
Right, so, so we're just talking dates as opposed to, it would not be a board meeting.
Yeah, my, my suggestion will be, everybody in the room, including the board members, will know when the crane will be there. If you just drive by during that time period, what we'll do is, we will have our engineer drive around, see where there's visibility of the balloon. We just use the crane so that the balloon is stable and doesn't blow all over the place. We'll present you with a report at the end to show you the actual balloon, the actual crane test. You'll see the balloon. You'll see the balloon in a photograph, and then we'll, we'll do a digital photograph with the tower on it, with the tower superimposed where the balloon was. So, we just, we use the balloon as a point of reference. You'll get a package, whether you visit the site or not, you'll see the implications of the, or the lack of implications of the tower with both actual and proposed conditions.
So, Norine, we usually post the site visits, so how far in advance do we usually post those?
Two days.
So, so could we just continue this to February 10, and then everyone could chime in on what the best date is for the site, and then you can just pick one and post it?
Right. Unless you want to, where you have?
The 29th.
Right.
I didn't hear what you said unless.
Oh, I was just thinking, you know, there's an internal board meeting, just within the board for administrative matters on the 29th.
And/or retreat, for lack of a better term.
And so where, that would be in the morning, as of approximately midday, the board would be local and would be available to go.
And all together, and right down the road.
Right. So that might be an ideal date.
Yeah, that would be up to you. I think you have to post it 48 hours ahead as a public meeting. It wouldn't be a public hearing, though.
No.
Right. We have no problem with the dates. We can schedule the crane test very quickly, and we don't have significant weather. What I'd suggest is, let's get a date of the crane test. It does take us a little time after to process everything. So if we can get the date and the time for the crane test, we'll have an alternate date in case we either can't get the crane, or it breaks down on the way, we don't want to go through this again, you know, at a public hearing. So if we can get a date, and then a backup date, everybody in the room will know when, and you can view it, take pictures, or whatever.
And how much?
Soon, soon of the better on the crane test.
Sure. And how much time after the crane test do you think you might need to compile all that information?
Less than one week.
And I have to have my real estate guy look at it, so he's got a week, the real estate guy will probably be a week, so let's just, I think if we, we're going to get continued to the 10th, is that the likely scenario?
February 10.
February 10. So I'd say we should get the balloon test done at the beginning of January. Or, can you do it next week?
I don't know. It's, just because of the holidays, it's going to, I'd have to.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe we just go into the first week of January with this now. Scott, you want to throw out a couple of dates, and we could just take?
I'd say the second week of January, the third week of January, those would be safe, you know.
I'm not going to be here the second week.
Is there a preference on the day of the week?
Probably when you make a weekend.
Usually equally inconvenient.
Huh?
They're usually equally inconvenient.
During the weekdays, they'll have, the sun will set early.
So we're, we're probably best to schedule the site visit for the 29th.
Well, what he's saying is that he wants a little time between the?
I know, but we have some members that aren't going to be in, and I'm going to be out by January 2, so.
I mean, we're all together on the 29th, I mean, our?
Unless we do, we continue this in further than February 10.
Or we could continue you to the 24th of February, if that would give you more time.
Yeah, I don't think we're the time, we're going to be the time problem, so I would like to stay with the 10th, and if we can find two dates, as I said, you don't have to go to it, because you'll see a photographic representation later, but if, if we can, we're going to, we're going to do it for a few hours, you know, we could do 10 to 1 or something like that. You want to pick a Wednesday and a Thursday, or a Friday and a Thursday? It doesn't?
I would kind of recommend a weekend day. And I don't know if you want to do, like, 15, 22nd-type of thing for, in case there's a weather event. I mean, they will take photos for you, so that if you aren't even able to go, you get a photo simulation.
And the, and the actual, you'll, you'll see the crane itself, I mean, we'll document everything that we're doing. I mean, is the 8th and the 15th good?
Hold on.
Comment about the date. 15 just as an FYI, is just a weekend, Monday.
Good point. Thank you, good point. Well, we could shoot for the 8th and the 22nd. I mean, if it goes, I anticipate it'll go, so if we get it to go on the 8th, then that gives me a month to get everything finished. If it doesn't happen, and we have to move to the 22nd, we'll, we'll deal with it, and we'll, we'll put the pressure on them. Does the 8th, would the 8th work for the first date?
8th work for anyone? Yeah?
Not for me, but I, I don't have to be there.
All right. So we'll shoot on the 8th, and as a backup date, the 22nd, then?
Okay.
It's what?
10 to 1? Is that sufficient?
Think that works?
Yes.
All right.
All right, so then I'd make a motion to continue this to February 10, 2022, with a scheduled site visit on January 8th, with a backup date of the 22nd, 10 to 1.
Second.
All right, so the motion was made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy holidays, and I'll be in the hallway for a minute.
Thank you.
These are the two, these are the 9.
These, right, these plans have the small size of this.
Up next, moving on to our new hearings, we have application number 55-20 MRLBE LLC, Rebecca Anne Lane, Lot 2 in East Falmouth, requesting a modification of comprehensive permit number 055-20 to allow modifications to previously approved plans.
Okay, so application number 55-20 MRLBE LLC, 133 Falmouth Road, Mashpee, Mass., is applied to zoning board of appeals for modification of comprehensive permit number 55-20 pursuant to master under laws, Chapter 40B, to allow modifications to previously approved plans. Subject property is Rebecca Anne Lane, Lot 2, East Falmouth, Mass. Planning board, no comment. Water department, no comment. Engineering, no objection or comments on the requested modifications to the plans. Fire department has no issued changes. Building department has no issues with the requested amendments. We don't have an updated list, right? We're, what, this one's before? So the changes, as of October 21st, 2021, they were requesting the following at that time. In the procedural history, section number 7, page 2, states the public hearing was closed on June 3rd, 2021. In fact, it was closed on June 10th, 2021. Number 2, the last bullet to the section titled "Plans Submitted by the Applicant/Applicant's Representative," page 4, are the landscape plans. The decision refers to drawings submitted and dated September 17th, 2020. We submitted a revised plan dated April 21st, 2021, which is the final plan for approval. 3, in the decision under filing, finding number 8, page 5, does not list the July 29th meeting.
No, that's not.
4, in the decision under finding, finding number 19, page 5, suggests that all door openings are 2 feet 8 inches. In fact, only the bedroom and bathroom doors are 2 feet 8 inches. The front doors are 3 feet. Number 5, finding number 24, page 6, refers to a proposed dumpster. There is no dumpster shown on the final approved plans. We will be using tote cans with weekly pickup by a trash removal company at the applicant's expense. 6, finding number 25, page 6, states the rent is limited to 30% of the residence income. This is incorrect. Rent is limited to 80% AMI, and the residents can pay up to 35% to 40% of their income towards the rent set and approved by the project sponsor. 7, finding number 47, page 7, incorrectly states that the one-bedroom rent is 1,223 less 150 for utilities, and the rent for the two-bedroom, 1,471 less 176 for utilities. The applicant projects the rents of 1,223 for one-bedroom, and 1,471 for a two-bedroom with the tenants paying the utilities. 8, condition number 1, page 5, the third bullet in 44.2, page 14, points out that the architectural plans are incorrectly numbered and titled. We have corrected the numbers and titling discrepancies and added relevant detail sheets. It is not a building permit requirement. The plans be signed and stamped for a project of this type. We did, however, make some design changes. These changes are listed below and did not change the footprint of the foundation square footage of the buildings, nor does it change the number of bedrooms. A, deleted basements and bulkheads at buildings 1 through 4. B, eliminated laundry room and made it a pantry. And C, added a pull-down staircase for utility access. 9, condition 14, page 10, prohibit accessory structures and sheds. We would like to include a 12-by-16 maintenance shed for owner's use. See plans attached. 10, condition number 51, page 16, requires board approval of our lottery agent. We have selected Hack as our lottery agent. We ask that you ascend to this selection. Furthermore, in this condition, there's a request that you approve the final lottery plan. Mass Housing approves the plan, and you have provided a copy. We ask the decision be revised to reflect this. 11, finding number 46, page 7, indicates that Mass Housing will do the monitoring. Mass Housing has designated Neighbor Works as monitor. Please have the finding reflect this. We will provide a copy of the Affordable Monitor Service Agreement when fully executed. Request that the board find these changes substantial. Oh, this was when they were going for instantiability, so those are the changes, unless anything is different has occurred.
I'll set, Paul?
Yep.
All right, and I'll appoint Scott as voting member on this. And for the applicant, we have Mr. Marioni.
Good evening. We did file an amendment to this. Did you, you want to read that into the record? Dated December 2nd?
Excuse me.
Do we have a?
We should have, but it, maybe just that the page is not in the binder there. It's probably in the office instead.
Okay, so if you have that, Mr. Maroni, maybe you can go over what it is.
Sure. It would, I'll bring a copy up after. Do you want me to read it in, or you want to read it?
I can read it in if you want, if that's the copy. So this is dated Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. Cardinal Place requests for insubstantial change dated 21st of October, 2021. Art to the Administrator, Norine. Norine, we wish to amend our request for insubstantial change dated 21, October, 2021 as follows. Number 8, we will put in basements and laundry rooms as shown on the original approved plans. Attached to the updated correctly labeled and numbered plans to be accepted into the file. And number 10, Hack has asked us to try to find another lottery agent. As they are overloaded with work, we have selected Paula Stewart of Community Development Strategies, who is on the list of qualified lottery agents for Mass Housing and DHCD.
All right. All set, Mr. Marioni?
Yes, so, so we, we did submit, we went back to the original plans, the exact same footprints, the exact same floor plans, and we renumbered, relabeled all the plans as requested in the original approval, and added supplemental plans showing the detail sheets, the sections through, and the window ratings and all that. So they're full sets of construction plans, and we ask that the board accept those into the file. And we have signed a contract with Paula Stewart and Neighbor Works. We'll be, we'll be submitting those along with the, at the required time. The, the other thing, I don't think, we've run into this condition before, and in my number, number 10, we had to do an insubstantial change in this once before, where the comp permit says that you have to approve the marketing plan. You don't approve the marketing plan, you get a copy of it. So, with that said, I'd like to see how the board wants to proceed with that. Do you want to talk about the shed?
Do you want to go over each item?
You want to go?
No, why don't you?
Why don't we do one by one?
No, why don't you go one by one?
Do individual votes.
Can we clean this up before we go to that?
Yeah.
With this amendment that we've read into the record, it says you reverted back to full basements and laundry rooms?
Yes.
About the bulkheads?
Yes. Yeah, we went back to the original plans.
All right. But it's not identified on there.
All right, so why don't we start with number 1? So again, in the procedural history, section number 7, it states the public hearing was closed on June 3rd, 2021. It was, in fact, enclosed on June 10th, 2021, so that's just a typo, that shouldn't really be an issue.
Yep.
Want to vote these individually?
Let's do them individually, that we would done.
All right. Sure.
Yep.
So all those in favor of number 1? Changes stated?
Sure. You want to?
Well, you can, you paused, so I didn't know.
No, no, no.
Move to make the administrative change as proposed.
There we go. Thank you, James. Second?
I'll do it.
All right, second by, I'll give that to Scott Z. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
To the record, my, in substantial or change.
Number 2, the last bullet to the section titled "Plans Submitted by Applicant/Applicant's Representative," page 4, are the landscape plans. The decision refers to drawings submitted and dated September 17th, 2020. We submitted revised plan dated April 21st, 2021, which is the final plan for approval.
All right, so a vote on number 2? Everyone want to make that motion?
Motion to accept the changes as stated, number 2.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
Number 3, in the decision under finding, finding number 8, page 5, does not list the July 29th meeting. Motion to accept number 3 as stated.
All right, motion's made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
Number 4, the decision under finding, finding 19, page 5, suggests all door openings are 2 feet 8 inches. In fact, only the bedroom and bathroom doors are 2 feet 8 inches, 3 foot on the front door. So, Norine, on that change, can we add in at the doors, that's the bedroom and bath, and the front doors are 3 feet? So then I would make a motion to accept number 4 as amended.
Thank you, Bob. Motion made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
All right, finding number 24, page 6, refers to a proposed dumpster. There is no dumpster shown on the final approved plans. We will be using tote cans with weekly pickup by a trash removal company at the applicant's So I guess a question to the administrator, does anything have to be more specific in the wording, or is that?
I don't think so. I think we can just put that substitution in.
I guess I usually have one question. So where they are going to be cans, where will they be storing the cans?
More than likely on the back patios, or the side of the houses.
So I guess a question to the administrator, if they're doing a, if they're doing a, if we agree to tote cans, can we put in there that, that storage of the tote cans can't be in the front of the properties?
That's fine.
So then I'd make a motion to accept that as amended, that the tote cans not be allowed to be stored at the front of the properties.
All right, so motion's made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
Six, finding number 25, page 6, states that the rent is limited to 30% of the residence income. This is incorrect. Rent is limited to 80% AMI, and the residents can pay up to 35% to 40% of their income towards the rent set and approved by the project sponsor. Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Bob, second by Scott Zelinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
Seven, finding 47, page 7, incorrectly states that a one-bedroom rent is 1,223 less 150, $150 for utilities, and the rent for a two-bedroom is 1,471 less than 176 for utilities. The applicant projects the rents of 1,223 for a one-bedroom and 1,471 for a two-bedroom, with the tenants paying the utilities, so then we would amend this to that last sentence.
Did you move that?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend that with the, just giving the last sentence, that the applicant's projected rents of 1,223 for a one-bedroom and 1,471 for a two-bedroom. that the applicant's projected rents of 1,223 for a one-bedroom and 1,471 for a two-bedroom, with the tenants paying the utilities.
All right, so motions made by Bob. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Number eight, in Condition Number 1, Page 5, the third bullet in 44.2, Page 14, points out that the architectural plans are incorrectly numbered and titled. We have corrected the numbers in title and discrepancies and added relevant detail sheets. It is not a building permit requirement that plans be signed or stamped for a project of its type. We did, however, make some design changes. These changes are listed below and do not change the footprint. Why don't we list all of them and have a discussion? Well, A, it said deleted basements and bulkheads. As of the amendment tonight, they're putting those back, so we would, there is no, there is no requested change to delete basements and bulkheads. Eliminate laundry room and make it a pantry. They have requested tonight that they will not be eliminating laundry room. They'll be keeping the laundry room. So Item C would be added a pulldown staircase for utility access. So on those plans, Mr. Marioni, where's the pulldown staircase? What, on the second floor or near the...
With the, with the new plans, we eliminated the pulldown, took the pulldown staircase out too, because that was there with the slab, with the mechanicals in the attic. Now we'll be putting them in the basement.
Okay, so right now you're not asking for A, B, and C, that those have all been scratched?
No. No, we're going back to the original plans.
So we're just correcting the numbers and titles?
Correct. And the date, I changed the date to go along with all that on the plans. So you have a full set of drawings to accept into the file that are in front of you, I believe.
Okay, so then I would make a motion to accept the corrected numbers and discrepancies that were added to the relevant detail sheets. Confirmation by the zoning administrator. If we have to list the plans, I just don't have other plans.
All right. So that's the motion, Bob?
Yeah, no additional changes with anything else.
Second.
All right, so motions made by Bob, second by Scott Zelinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Number nine, Condition 14, Page 10 prohibits accessory structures and sheds. We would like to include a 12 by 16 maintenance shed for the owner's use. See plans attached.
Mr. Marioni, now do you want to talk about the shed?
So this, there's, there's shed location B for us is here. Our A location, we prefer the shed is here. If you don't want it that close to the street, that would be our alternate requested location for it. Shed is a 12 by 16 utility shed with an overhead door and a passage door. It'd be used to store maintenance equipment for the, equipment and accessories for the site, screens, replacement parts, the ramp, lawnmower, things that we'd have to bring to the site on a regular basis.
And both, both of those locations are on this lot, correct?
Yes.
And that are, at our previous meeting when you were requesting things, you had mentioned that the owner would also be using that for his own business besides just this property? Is that still the same?
We suggested that it could be. You didn't seem to like it. We see no need to limit it, but if that were a condition, we'd limit it to only materials to be used on this site.
And if it, if it were to be placed at the location closest to the road, how far off of the road would it be?
Well, I don't see a dimension on the septic system. I believe the septic has to be... I can move it back. So was it say 20 feet off the road?
Okay, so give or take 20 feet?
And on that other location, that's, that's really not near any septic or anything, right?
I'm sorry?
That location is already set, so it's not near, it doesn't interfere with any...
No, it doesn't interfere with any drainage or anything back there. It's easily accessible for us. Both of them are. This one right off, right off the end of the parking lot, you know, so... And that one can be access from this side, which the owner has access to.
Right, so I guess just my comment would be on, on the placement, that if it was the one near the parking lot, that would appear to be a shed in a front yard.
Right, and that's what I was...
I don't consider this insubstantial, this, this particular one. I don't have a problem cleaning up the rest of the decision or making the changes so far, but this, this I don't think is insubstantial. I think the abutters have the right to weigh in on this issue.
It's going to be like town meeting, and we'll hold this and keep on going to the others?
Yeah, we can hold it if you want.
There we go.
Excellent idea.
I'm missing a little of the discussion here.
Sure, so we're just going to hold discussion on that for now? We're trying to, we're, we're going to try to get the insubstantial ones out of the way.
So, number 10, Condition Number 51, Page 16, requires Board approval of our lottery agent. We have selected Hack as our lottery agent. We ask that you ascend to this selection. Furthermore, in this condition, there is a request that you approve the final lottery plan. Mass Housing approves the plan and you have provided a copy. We ask that decision be revised. So on his update tonight, he has said that Hack was too busy, so they have now selected Paula Stewart of Community Development Strategies, who is on the list of qualified lottery agents for Mass Housing and DHCD. So we would have to adjust this to say we have selected Paula Stewart of Community Development Strategies, who is on the list of qualified lottery agents for Mass Housing and DHCD.
And you would need a copy of the contract.
Yeah, we'd need a copy of the contract as part of the condition.
I guess the question is, do you want to identify that particular person, or do you want to say, based on the contract that you submit?
No, it is Paula Stewart.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then you'd add in there that we would, and they would submit the contract?
Yeah, we already signed it, so I'll, I'll submit it.
To be approved by Mass Housing, correct?
The plan, the plan, the lottery agent now does the plan, commits that to Mass Housing for approval. They've already submitted a draft. So we had to select the lottery agent first so we could do the plan. That's being worked on.
And we would strike the section that says that we approve the final lottery plan. We just include Mass Housing approves the plan, and we'll provide the zoning board of appeals a copy.
All right, so is that all right as, as revised?
With those changes, so I would make a motion to approve as revised.
Second.
All right, motion's made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Number 11, Finding Number 46, Page 7, indicates Mass Housing will do the monitoring. Mass Housing has designated Neighbor Works as a monitor. Please have the finding reflect this. We will provide a copy of the Affordable Monitoring Service Agreement when fully executed.
What's the change in that?
So we would have to say that Mass Housing will designate Neighbor Works as the monitor?
They actually have selected Neighbor Works. They've had Neighbor Works prepare the contract, instructed us to sign the contract, and it's back in Mass Housing's hands now for kind of countersignature.
So can we just...
Neighbor Works, and we have signed it. Mass Housing has to sign it.
So why don't we just, I guess we could...
Don't you have to hold that till they sign the, the second signature?
Well, we'd have to say Mass Housing has designated Neighbor Works as monitor, and a copy of the contract to be provided to the zoning board of appeals.
The change there is that the comp permit says that Mass Housing is a monitoring agent.
Yeah.
And they're not.
They still have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
They're a party to it, but they're not the monitoring agent.
So the new level will say Mass Housing has designated Neighbor Works as a monitor, a contract to be supplied to the zoning board of appeals of the Affordable Monitor Service Agreement when fully executed.
All right.
Motion to approve as revised.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Bob, second by Scott Zelinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And back to lovely number nine.
I concur with Mr. Morse. Guards the shed, if that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
All right. So was there anything else, or is that...
That's the only one that's left, is the shed.
All right. I suppose we're opening up discussion a little, little bit more about the shed?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Marioni, anything else to add?
I actually didn't hear Mr. Morse's comments.
My concern, Mr. Marioni, is that I think that this is not an insubstantial change. I think that abutters have the right to be heard. If you want to bring it back here, it needs to, the hearing needs to be reopened, that when this plan went in, it was not on there. Talking about placing an accessory structure on a lot line very close to one of the other residences there, and I think the abutters have a right to weigh in, to be notified of this change. Everything else tonight, I would, I've agreed with you and have supported the changes. But as to that issue, I feel strongly, the abutters have a right to come in and weigh in on that.
I'm just a little confused, because I thought this was a public hearing.
Oh, it certainly is, but I think that was just...
And the abutters weren't notified?
So we're voting to find out whether we believe that this is an insubstantial change or not? And he's just giving you some context to it. Why?
No, no, we, we already voted that.
No, this is, this is the, this is the hearing.
This is the hearing on the substantial change.
This is the...
This was a mail to...
Yeah, this was the approach.
Right, so this is the public hearing.
We had a public comment before we vote on this.
A public comment is what...
All right. All right, so if we do want to turn it over to public comment, let's do that. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Come on up, you can go up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shannon Sylvia. I live at 33 Timothy Bourne Cartway, which is behind Rebecca Anne. In the original plans, it had said that the only trees, the trees that were going to be removed were the ones that needed to be, and that some should be left, only the ones that were needed. So if you look, you see they have completely gotten rid of every single tree behind the entire Timothy Bourne Cartway, other than towards the, towards the main street, completely gone. Not one branch is left. So now we have a beautiful view of Kenyon Market, and I'm like the furthest away. And so there's concerns, well, we'd like to have some trees back. We did see the landscape plans, which addressed between the units, and it addressed Rebecca Anne Lane. But there is no greenery, no trees, anything along the fence line for Timothy Bourne Cartway in the plans, the new plans. So, that's my concern.
All right, Shannon Sylvia?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we, we did have a letter from the peer engineer who reviewed the site. There was a Zoom meeting that was held pre-construction, and there were instructions about not clearcutting the site until erosion and sediment control was in and inspected, but the site was clearcut.
Mr. Marioni, to Ms. Sylvia's point, the site conditions have changed drastically, to the point that it is completely clearcut. Any comment on that?
The only comment I have on that is we had, we got a waiver from the requirement, and we were allowed to clearcut the site.
Okay, so item, so number 31E says, "Any trees on or proximal to lot line shall be preserved to all extent possible. Trees on the lot line are considered jointly owned, cannot be removed absent approval by both property owners. Trees to be saved shall be marked with a sufficient perimeter, usually a drip line, to ensure protection of the roots." That's 31E. And these were things to be done prior to construction. It was prior to site work. We did have confirmation from the zoning administrator that they were at the meeting prior to site work, and it was discussed with the contractor. When the peer engineer review went out, they had a look at the property, he alerted that that item was not complied with because the property was clearcut.
Do you have a landscaping plan, Mr. Marioni?
The one you just accepted into the files, the, previously, and the Condition 2, I guess it was? Is that what you're asking about? So trees along the road here, new trees?
The back line.
That represents foliage, doesn't it?
No, in front, in front of the fence, the little wavy lines?
Yeah.
The fence, we didn't put the fence up. The fence was existing.
I didn't ask that. In front, so between the fence and these new buildings, see those little wavy lines?
Yeah.
Goes all the way until that also section in front?
It's a multi-area there.
Those are supposed to be the treat area that they were to preserve.
There were no trees there to preserve. Everything that came down in the clearcutting of that site was on our side of the fence, on our property.
I understand it's on your side of the fence. What I'm saying is in the plan, we had asked that the trees at the back of the lot there be preserved.
Let me just give a little backstory.
Sure.
We had this pre-construction meeting. In the pre-construction meeting, it was brought up that we needed to do certain things before we could cut the trees. We said that's not really possible. At the end of the meeting, I sat with Noreen, and to her credit, she said, "Look, I don't do construction. Take it up with the peer review engineer." I contacted the peer review engineer, and I explained to him, "You're asking us to, this doesn't show that..." We had to build this entrance here. We had to put silt fence around the site. We had, his report shows all kinds of pictures where we set protection for drainage areas that weren't there yet. We had to build a concrete washout station, all before we cut trees. And I tried to explain to him, "This doesn't make any sense. The sequence is off here. How do we, how do we do these things without clearing the trees out of the way? How do we set the silt fence? It's, it's, it's a jungle out there. It wasn't so much trees as it was brush." So he said, "Look, I have no authority to make that change. Call me when you get the silt fence up." I said, "I can't set the silt fence unless we do these things. I, I can't set the silt fence, build the entrance, and do what you want me to do unless we cut the trees." He said, "Call me when you're ready." We cut the trees, we set the silt fence, we built the entrance. If you go out there and look at it, it's, it's enormous.
All of that without coming back before the Board to get some kind of permission to, to do it out of sequence?
I, I feel like we did it as it was intended.
That's, that's the issue, Mr. Marioni. The interpretation of, of people on the ground, the site, the peer engineer didn't give you permission to clearcut the property. He said, "Call you when, when you've abided by what was written down, what we had approved."
He was talking about the silt fence.
That's your interpretation of what he, not ours.
That's pretty specific.
Otherwise, you wouldn't have this issue with us right now.
I don't have this issue because you're bringing it up as...
I'm looking at scarlet, a, a foliage on that back line, and you're talking about what's going on out front. We want to know what happened to what was on that property line.
You really did make us put silt fence against the fence that was out there, and we probably did more damage to trees putting the silt fence in because it had to be towed in.
So what trees did you do damage to, since there are no trees?
Probably the roots coming in from off the property.
But you just said the silt fence would have done damage to the trees. Well, it wouldn't matter anyways, because right now there's nothing. You clearcut. You also just stated... stated that the peer engineer said to you, "I don't have the right to give you that permission."
And she said she didn't know.
So the moment he said to you.
What, she said she didn't know what?
She's not construction person, so you didn't get permission to do anything. You just went on your own and decided that's what needed to be done and then come back before us.
I did it exactly how I thought the thing was interpreted.
Well, then that's where you erred.
The intent of it was to make sure that no runoff went off-site, everything was contained on-site, and that's 100% the way it is, and that's been confirmed by the peer review engineer since then.
So when you asked, so my question is, when you asked the peer engineer, and he answered you that he doesn't have the right to make that decision, wouldn't you, hearing that sentence, say, "Who has the right to make that decision?" Because he's there making sure there's compliance with the conditions, and he sent us notification that this is a clear violation of the compliance of the conditions. We didn't go out there, he sent it. So if he's sending us that it's a violation, and he stated to you he didn't have the right to make the change, why wouldn't you have at least contacted the office and say, "Who has the right to make the change?" Let's say you didn't know. The office would have told you. You'd have to come back in front of the board because it clearly states that decision. When you asked for the other changes this evening, you didn't mention that condition, which clearly states that you haven't complied with it. You put the other ones that you wanted changes to, but you completely glossed over the one that actually is the one that we've all gotten. I mean, you must have gotten notice. We, you know, you know he talked to the developer, he talked to the workers out there, the peer engineer review, and let them know this shouldn't have been done because there were other corrections they had to do. And we got copies, we got copies of the emails.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's, that's what it comes down to. He told you he didn't have the right to do the change, and then you decided, "Well, I don't know how else I'll do it, so we'll just do it." And then your answer is, "Well, if we did it that way, we do more damage to the trees." Well, you can't do any more damage to the trees than just removing every single one of them on the site.
I'll explain that. And, and in discussions with the peer review engineer, and not trying to throw him under the bus, he said, "I understand this makes no sense. I understand this makes no sense at all. Why we're building a concrete."
Where is that written, Bob?
We don't have.
In his report where it makes no sense?
We don't, we don't have.
It's not written in his report. It was a discussion I had.
Well, that's what we have to rely on.
We have to go by what is submitted.
And he said that it was a serious violation that occurred.
And we have a transcript from the Zoom meeting stating that this was discussed, and they were told not to clearcut the site.
It's, it's another case of not reading the decision, not reading the rules, not reading the, the, the conditions, and going about the subject on their own. They think that they know how to do it better. That's not what we voted on. And then they come back and ask for permission after the damage has already been done.
No damage.
What?
There's no damage.
You took down every tree on the site?
We're going to take them down anyway. We just took them down earlier.
You misread what they said. There were shared trees identified.
No, there was no shared trees. You don't know that. There were no shared trees.
It was in the report.
Every tree, every tree is on our side of the fence. In fact, a lot of the fence was on our side.
Nick, where did the roots come from?
Yeah.
Even if there was a tree on the other side of the fence, where would those tree roots go? Let's say there's a tree on the other side of the fence.
Yeah.
Don't you expect you'd have some roots on your side?
This is what I was talking about earlier, yes.
That would be against the lot line. That's why this is put in there, because if you start digging on this side and you cut all the roots, anything else the other side's going to die.
But you made us put the silt fence there, and we're not, and you told us we had to tow it in. There should have been no silt fence there.
Okay, let's just say you thought it was a problem. You did not think you could install the silt fence correctly with that condition. And that's what I, you say you believed. Then why didn't you come back to the board and say, "We cannot comply with this. This is why. How do we adjust it?" Because I'll tell you what I would have done on the board. I said, "Then adjust the silt fence and then plant a whole row of trees in the back to give somebody a buffer."
There's no room for the trees behind those patios. And the buffer is the fence. That's why the fence was there. You know what?
I don't think you're getting the, did you read the condition?
I did read the condition.
So what did you get by reading that condition?
I got, the intent of it was to make sure that no water ran off our site at any time.
No, no. I'm asking you for the condition that I just read that doesn't say anything about water. It just discusses the trees.
Why is the condition there?
The condition's there so that the growth at the back of the.
To bust out chops so to make sure the water doesn't get off the site.
No, it's there because there's a buffer in the back.
No, the condition is not for the buffer. What's a concrete washout station got to do with a buffer?
Look, you can spin this.
I'm not spinning it.
Yeah, you are. To be honest, you just told the zoning administrator that she said, "I don't know anything about trees. I can't answer the question."
No, she said, "I don't know anything about construction." She didn't say she didn't know anything about trees.
I mean, you're, you're making it sound like you're dealing with just inept people.
No, I'm not.
And this isn't the first, wait a sec. This is not the first time you've represented a project where these kind of issues have come up.
I think it is with this type of issue.
Where you've made a change?
No.
Okay, wait a sec. Where you have done a project.
You said this issue.
Where you have done a project and you have made changes against the condition and then come back after the fact.
This approach is becoming all too familiar, Mr. Marioni, and that's why we're pushing back on it. At some point, there has to be some pushback because after the first time, the second time, the third time, the fourth time, you would think that you'd know what we expected of our conditions, and that's why we're so succinctly put them together. And if you have a question, there's a clear line in there directed for you to come back to the board if it changes at all.
You know, let me just say this too, if I may. Let's go back to the root of the problem. You put conditions, incomprehensive permits, without giving us the opportunity of, number one, seeing the draft conditions before you vote on them. We get three hours before the meeting. A draft comes out. We get no, we can have no comments, no clarification, no coordination on how things work. I'm not talking new testimony. I understand we can't do that. But you say we can't even discuss. Almost every one of these conditions that I brought up, or these changes that I brought up.
Every one of them was administrative, other than.
Could have been avoided.
The foundations that I pushed back on, Mr. Potamus pushed back on the laundry room, which you obviously turned back because you knew that that was a sticking point for us.
Obviously. We don't want to hold up the project.
And every other one tonight was administrative, other than this. And if, and if the abutter hadn't come up here and brought it up in testimony, we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
Sure we would. Noreen would have brought it up before the meeting was over. She already told me it was coming up tonight. So the point is, if we have time to discuss those things, I would love to have a workshop on that, that condition. That is an impossible condition to live with. And, and we shouldn't have to stop the job every time one of those things comes up and come back here. No disrespect intended. We did what we felt was the right thing to do. We kept all the stuff on, all the drainage, all the water on-site. The second report to come out because the drainage is completed out there, said just that, that everything was fine.
I won't take up any more of the board's time, but I have one more, one more question for you. When the peer review engineer, you asked him what to do, and he said, "I can't make that determination," did it ever occur to you to come back to this board or the administrator for clarification before you went ahead and did whatever you wanted? That's what I want to know, a yes or no. Did you?
No, because the discussion went further than that. The discussion went further than that.
Who else had the authority to make that decision other than this board? When the peer engineer, the peer review engineer said, "I, I don't have the authority to make that decision," didn't that trigger something in your mind that they needed some authority to be taken? To get permission to change what, what was there?
No.
He identified it.
Because as part of that discussion, we talked about what the intent was.
Whose intent? Ours as a board?
No.
We had a clear intent.
No, the board, it's not the board's clause. It's, this is, this is, comes off the Sedimentation Erosion Control Plan, which is, the intent of that plan is to, is to maintain that no runoff leaves your site.
I would recommend to the board, just in the interest of time and moving this along, that you might consider requesting some landscaping along that lot line.
Has that already been discussed prior to this meeting? Okay.
Certainly think that's a good idea. I'm just worried about Mr. Maroni's representation that nothing can be fit back there up against the patios.
I would say nothing can be fit, limited.
Well, it's a tight fit.
It's a tight fit.
How much of a tight fit is it back there?
Well, I think the patio's eight feet off the property line. I think that was the last number. But we could, we could stick, I guess, a, a tree in between them here. You know, areas like that, we can stick, put trees.
Could we hear from the abutter for a moment? I just, I'd just like to know where her, if she just looked at this plan. Are you located at the far end of this plan?
Very far end, yes.
Right, right there?
What he just mentioned, if you can put trees that go over the fence on those, I think that would make a lot of people on my state very happy.
Because there you have room.
Or it could be between the units.
I think in that corner, it should be right on the whole corner. You've got room. He's talking about, and then between the units, if you have issues with the patios, but. I mean, I just don't understand why we get something from a peer engineer. He's very clear to us in October, they're in violation of the decision.
Just a pause real quick. The time is.
Wait a quarter.
Yeah, the time is 9:30. According to the board's business.
Move to continue the business of the board to 11:00 PM.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you, James. I was going to make that motion myself, so motion was made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the board's business will continue. Certainly don't have to go to 11, but that's out, that's out of the way.
So we want a landscaping plan, right? Any recommendations as to size? If we're trying to protect view, I mean, some people may say six feet, eight feet. I don't know.
Can we get input from the town tree warden? On what?
I don't think so. It's private property.
But we had six three-inch caliper trees.
On what we could put there?
I don't think he'll do it.
Could Port Pierre engineers make a recommendation?
I think what you could do is ask that there be some landscaping proposed for the northerly and westerly lot lines and ask them to present something to you.
Why don't we do that? Ask them just to submit.
Do we have a particular height, depending on how fast they grow?
Three-inch caliper.
Just submit a plan of what you could put fit in there to get as much height as you can.
I think, yeah, that's the issue from the neighbor, the height. I don't know how high a three-inch caliper is. Six feet, seven feet?
No, more than that. When it's planted, it's probably more like 14 feet.
Oh, okay.
So send it, so we'd have to show an example of what it is and where the plantings would be located on the site.
The other thing is, since we probably have to continue this, are we going to finish the discussion on the shed? I mean, we started off with the shed, and we got diverted legitimately. I don't know if there's any other public comment on the shed.
I mean, myself, I'd, I'd like to see it toward the rear of the property. I mean, if it's situated out front, then you're dealing with another waiver from this board, right?
Yeah, if you're going to, you wouldn't be able to put it up front because it's in the front yard. You'd have to put it in the second location they suggested out back, and you'd have to condition it that it's only for use for this site. Because the original said that he has other projects other places, and he wanted to use it for storage. It's very hard to enforce. But you either try to put a condition that to say it's for this site use only, or you decide that there shouldn't be one at all. I don't know, you know, sitting it back there makes sense. It's next to the parking lot of the abutting property, whether or not they're going to use it as a shared storage basis. Suppose you could ask an affidavit from the, the developer, since he's going to own the property and have the rents, that he signs an affidavit that it'll only be used for maintenance and storage of anything having to do with this property and not any other business entity he has or any of the properties that he has. It would be easier just to say no to the shed.
Be easy to say yes with the affidavit.
If you think they'll comply. If they don't comply, it's very hard to enforce. And I wouldn't be as concerned with it, except that he's, they specifically mentioned, when I asked last time, because he owns so many other properties, he needed more storage. If he owns that many other properties, maybe he has storage on the other properties. If that's what he does, then personally, I personally would rather see that there be no shed and that there be landscaping for the loss.
So are we looking to continue this? Are we voting part of this, or what would it?
I think we're looking for a continuance here.
Excuse me, can we, can we just agree on some landscaping tonight, and we'll withdraw the request for the shed? That makes you happy?
Yeah, I mean, go the rest of the board, yeah. I mean, pull the shed, and then if we, if we could decide what the landscaping is, then we could vote this tonight.
You guys need to see a landscaping plan, though.
They still have to submit one.
We'll submit a plan that shows six trees along this side of the property and trees at both these corners of this property. Minimum three-inch caliper, deciduous trees. We'll even, we'll spec out that there'll be October Glory or Crimson Kings or.
Why don't you consider maybe alternating with Evergreen, just so that you don't have certain times of the year where there's nothing there?
If that makes you happy, we'd do that too. Want to Aburaidi or Cedar?
Yeah, do an Evergreen tree line in those locations and submit the, an updated landscape plan to show where the locations are.
All right.
Live with that.
Think so?
Yeah, with an emphasis on that side for most coverage, where the abutter's here tonight and has a problem.
They want to seek input from the abutter.
Say that again?
You may want to seek input from the abutter, what she might like.
Well, I need approval from the board. I'll be happy to talk to the abutter, but.
Very good. All right, so.
But what I'm trying to do is get a decision tonight so we don't have to continue with something that we could probably decide on tonight.
I'd, I'd be comfortable with a physical landscape plan before making a decision myself.
I mean, you could file all the other items that you voted and then just leave that as the one item that's open, and you could potentially do it during open meeting or something.
So how do we file that they come back just for that? Do we have to request that they come back for that?
No, I think you have an understanding that they will.
I don't want to go by understandings anymore. My understandings are done.
Recommendation to approve with submission of landscaping plan as discussed this evening.
Oh, we can approve the other stuff from this evening and then require the applicant to appear here again with a date to go over his remedies to the removal of all the trees on the site. So what's, what's our, what could a date be for that?
February 10.
So if that's okay, then I would be, I would make a motion to approve the other items that we approved of tonight. No approval for an additional structure, but in the findings that the applicant has withdrawn his request for a storage shed, put in findings that we discussed, the info from the peer engineer on the removal of the, all the trees on the strike, on the site in the violation listed condition at, let me see, 15.
Testimony from the abutter.
And a testimony from the abutter. Testimony for the applicant, and then require them to come back to submit a landscaping plan for the addition of the tree line at the back and corners of the property.
So specifically, you want the north and west, yes?
Yeah.
We want a certified landscaping plan or?
They just came in with a plan and we approved it, but that this board would have to approve of. And then I would put in there prior to any. I've already started doing the, we should put in there, even though we put a date in prior to. The building permits or something. I mean, we need something to.
Prior to occupancy?
Well, you, all right, so it would be ideal to have the landscaping installed prior to occupancy. So, because you don't want landscaping damaged while construction's underway.
You don't want a plant in the winter. No.
So I, I think as long as you accept a plan and then.
It gets done for a plan.
Right. And that won't hold up their building.
What's our next date to have them appear for the plan?
February 10. 10.
All right, so then we would only be continuing to February 10 for the submittal of the landscaping plan?
All right.
Then the only other thing is where they're not in compliance with that one condition, I don't know if we'll eventually at that time have to adjust the condition.
Adjust which condition?
Well, I mean, how do you, how do you handle it when there's, so how do you handle it administratively when the condition is in there, you know that they're in violation?
Right, so this would be a corrective. Right, so this would be a corrective action.
So we'd have to change that?
No, you don't change it. You just...
And add to it that it's corrective action to correct the issue with that condition?
May I ask a question? So are you suggesting that we can walk out of here tonight with an approval where we have to submit a landscape plan?
So you'd walk out of here tonight with approval of the items that we've already voted on? Also, the statement that you've withdrawn any addition of any shed, but with the caveat that you'll have to come back here in February 10 and submit a landscaping plan on what we discussed tonight for that back buffer?
Right, but you'll issue a decision on this that we can...
On the other items and then...
We're real close to final approval of mass housing on this. So we're actually gonna be submitting the regulatory agreement at the January 13 meeting. So this doesn't sound like it's gonna hold up that, because the condition would say, prior to certificate of occupancy, we would have to have an approved plan, even though we're coming back February 10, not prior to building permits.
Right, so the plan, the plan would be reviewed by the board on the 10th, and then installation would be tied to occupancy. So you have the opportunity to build the buildings, and then the landscaping has to be in before...
But we can't get COs until we've done...
Correct.
Which makes more sense that you could do it in the spring, after you've got the structures up and all of that, rather than have to replant trees that may or may not die during the winter, just to satisfy odds.
In there, we would put in what the tree condition, like we do on the other ones, that they have to be kept and maintained in a healthy within two years.
Fair enough, Mr. Marioni?
If I understand it, that if there's an approval, we can proceed through the mass housing with this modification, and the modification requires us later to come back for the landscape plan that has to be approved.
Yep, just let mass housing know that you're coming back for a modification of the landscaping plan because of however you want to put it.
Okay. All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We need to make the motion first.
So that's the motion. Everything that was discussed, I don't...
All right, so continuing to... I know.
I mean, if you're gonna break it down, a motion to...
No, you got it, but continuing to February...
To approve everything else, continue to February 10 for the submittal of the landscaping plan for the tree line and the buffer that was removed, the shed was withdrawn, and the other items we've already approved by vote this evening.
All right, so motion was made by Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, houses unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Marioni.
Happy holidays.
You, too. All right, moving right along. Application 99-21, Chockley, 404 Hayway Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a detached accessory apartment. Voting number on this project, I'll be appointing Jerry.
All right, application number 99-21, William N. and Kristen D. Chockley, 404 Hayway Road, East Falmouth, Mass., apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 38i of the Code of Falmouth to allow a detached accessory apartment, subject property known as 330 Hayway Road, East Falmouth, Mass. For referrals, there was an updated referral from Scott McGann. He did say they were gonna be upgrading the existing three-bedroom septic to handle the additional bedroom, and he added that the office in the basement in the main house lacks the windows required in Title V, and it's the only way to leave that level, other than going up the stairs, so that isn't considered privacy for a bedroom. And the enclosed porch in the accessory apartment, the porch door is a means, a second means of aggress for the main house, so that also doesn't afford privacy for the room to be practically used as a bedroom. From Concom, the proposed activities appear to be located outside of conservation jurisdiction. From engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Hayway Road is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells for stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. If approved, the accessory apartment will require an address assignment based on the town's address policy. The address would be 404 Hayway Road, Apartment A. DPW Engineering Division will assign the address prior to sign-off on the building permit. We recommend adding that upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. Again, health department is fine with the septic. It's gonna be upgraded. The new septic will have four-bedroom capacity. Also noted in there that there is sufficient lot space, that the proposed project does not trip the denitrifying septic system requirement outlined in the accessory apartment bylaw. Assessors, assessors request an inspection at completion. From Kahala Water, the water service in Maine are on the plans as required. The existing home has a service fed from a 12-inch main in Hayway Road. The new building shows a two-inch service fed from a 12-inch main per the Falmouth Water Department specs. The water meter for the new building must be installed inside. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. From planning, the applicant received a site plan review approval from the planning board, and that site plan approval is attached. And that's it.
All right, and for the applicant, we have Attorney Pallone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Jonathan Pallone. I'm here for the applicant's Nat and Kristen Chockley. They're seeking a special permit under 240, 38i to allow construction of a detached accessory dwelling to be used as an in-law apartment. The subject lot is located at 404 Hayway Road, shown here on the site plan. It's zoned agricultural A. It's a conforming lot with 100 feet of frontage, 150 feet of frontage, a little over 60,000 square feet of area. It is located within the Water Resource Protection District in the Great Pond Coastal Pond Overlay. The existing house is one and a half stories, approximately 24 feet tall, built around 1987, has approximately 793 square feet of area, three bedrooms. The accessory dwelling, as you can see here, is gonna be behind it. It's a one-story, one-bedroom, 714 square feet of area, which is less than 40% of the principal dwelling floor area. It'll be accessed along the existing paved driveway, which passes around along the side of the main house. And it's proposed to increase the existing Title V septic system by adding one 500-gallon tank to increase it to four bedrooms. This satisfies all the requirements of 240, 38i and 240, 216. Because it's appropriately sized, it's accessory to and subordinate to the main dwelling, has only one bedroom pursuant to the overlay and the other district. It has less than one bedroom per 10,000 square feet. It's gonna maintain the appearance and character of the single-family dwelling that's on the site, and it's intended to match the character of that dwelling. The increases to lot coverage are minimal, from 3.4% to 4.6% for structures, and 13.9% to 15.2% for total coverage. There's no anticipated effect on traffic. There's gonna be one person living in the accessory dwelling. No effect on visual character, no changes to utilities, and this is not a restricted affordable using, so it doesn't add or take away from any affordable housing. In conclusion, I think this is an appropriate project, asking that you grant the special permit to approve this project. Regarding the conditions, from the health department, we'll be seeking a permit for upgrading the septic system. I think there's a plan to have some water infiltration in place, probably dry wells to deal with the excess roof coverage from the accessory dwelling. I think that's, that's it. You have any questions?
Thank you, Attorney Pallone. Board questions? Jerry, anything?
Not at this time.
All right, James?
No, it's time.
Scott?
No, thank you.
Bob?
No.
Scott Peterson?
All set.
Nothing? All right, and nothing for me either, so public comment? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Actually, I'm the homeowner.
Oh, sure.
I have a quick one question.
If you could come up, sorry.
As, in respect to the dry wells, is it possible to use like a rain barrel to irrigate our garden instead of the dry well, or does it have to go into the ground, into the groundwater that way?
I don't know if we've ever been asked that.
Okay.
I could answer.
Yeah? Do you actually, yeah?
No, engineering wouldn't allow rain barrels.
They wouldn't?
Okay.
I mean, shouldn't we ask engineering?
You can if you want to continue the application.
No, if you don't want to continue.
No, no.
Sounds like it has to be dry wells, then.
All right, I can do that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a first.
Move to close.
Public comment?
Oops, sorry.
Anything else for public comment? All right, not seeing any. Back to the board.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion's made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. As for any decision by the board?
Motion to approve with condition?
Second.
Jerry, you're making that? All right. Motion to approve with conditions made by Jerry and second by James. Findings?
Not significantly adverse to the, to the neighborhood and the environment, consistent with the accessory apartment.
240, 38i.
That's, yeah, okay. Where the health intends to approve, testimony of the board of health is gonna approve a four-bedroom septic.
An upgraded four-bedroom.
An upgraded.
Correct.
No opposition? Finding, there's no opposition? Our comments, one way or the other. The drainage issue was asked and answered appropriately with regards to...
Rain barrel.
Stormwater, yep.
Lot is 60,824 square feet, keeping with a 10,000-square-foot-per-bedroom water protection requirement.
Yeah, we'll list those overlay districts.
Thank you.
Testimony is one person, family member?
Yep. In-law apartment basically being proposed, one bed within the accessory apartment? Anything else for findings?
So we'll need 240, 240, 183B, 240, 38i, and 240-dash-216. And 240... Give me one second. I think 23i. Yeah, 240, 23i also.
We have a condition about numbering the accessory dwelling for 911 purposes.
Yeah, we'll do that at, we'll do the conditions. I'll put into the findings that the health department doesn't count the lower-level study in the main house as a bedroom or the porch, because neither lacks privacy due to it being a second aggress of each structure. And also put in that the, due to the extended lot size, it doesn't trip the denitrification septic regulation of the accessory bylaw.
All right. Anything else for findings? All right, how about conditions?
Our plan?
Our plan.
Dry wells for the accessory structure for stormwater runoff, subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. They have to comply with 240, 23i.
Not to be rented.
Yeah, that's part of it. I just want to see...
Covers under...
240, 38i.
So I think you are allowed to rent, but I think you have to...
Yeah, so you can, yeah, and if either unit is unoccupied by the owner, you can't rent that unit. Just wanted to check on... So 240, 38i. And I think 240, I did say 240, 23i, right?
I think that is for a different district.
Well, it's a different aspect, but it's the same. No, it concludes the, no, it's the monitoring, so yeah, so 240-dash-23i. We can actually... And you can mention 240, 23i, 6A.
That's the, that's the monitoring requirement.
It's the affidavit that no one's submitted. Did we put in the findings, it's in the Great Pond Coastal Pond Overlay District?
Yeah, I said mention the overlay districts, yeah.
Put in the findings that it's subject to the approval of a four-bedroom septic system by the health department. Put in the conditions that the assessors department must be allowed access at completion of the project to inspect the property for the assessing purposes, interior and exterior.
Anything else for conditions?
We don't have to do, I mean, it's such a big site that...
Yeah, it's big.
Don't need any...
Don't need to worry about...
Right.
Keeping anything on site or...
Right.
We did, we did per plans, correct?
Yep.
We did the affixing of numbers, yep.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. No, that's it.
All right.
Oh, and on the, and you listed in the findings that they actually said what the numbers would be? And then, then that's fine.
All right. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Jerry and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, houses unanimously. Attorney Pallone, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, up next we have application 100-21, Trefero, 330 Edgewater Drive East in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit for the existing sunroom and construct an addition in its place exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
So application 100-21, William L. and Mary F. Trefero, 61 Richard Road, Holliston, Mass., apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240, 69E and 240, 3C of the Code of Falmouth, remove the existing sunroom and construct an addition in its place exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 330 Edgewater Drive, East Falmouth. Conservation Commission is hearing a notice of intent for the above referenced property, which has been continued. It's said here to December 1st.
Ash, I may need some help on this.
Sorry, guys, I'm a little technologically challenged.
No worries.
For engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Edgewater Drive is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way.
Okay.
Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project was not directing any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Dry well is proposed for the roof addition as recommended. With a new front entrance proposed, we recommend the following condition, subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. This project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. We defer to the Commission for Stormwater Management and Construction Erosion Controls. Now, we have requested Concom require additional erosion controls to protect the right of way in downstream catch basin. From health, the addition shown to be on peers, peer foundations do not require a setback to the leaching field, which is quite close to this proposed addition. Please field verify the septic location and ensure it is not disturbed. From assessors, this includes lot 6, 6NB. Planning, no comment. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. There is a lot coverage, ball calculation worksheet that's been submitted. That's it.
All right, and for this project, we'll be appointing Scott as voting number, and for the applicant.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Peter Langen, Langen Contracting Services, located right here in Falmouth. I'm here tonight representing my client... I'm here tonight representing my clients, William and Mary Trefero, who are also here tonight. The property address is three thirty Edgewater Drive East, Community of Seacoast Shores, and we're here tonight seeking a special permit for a lot coverage in excess of twenty percent. And I believe we have a fairly simple project that will consist of a new fourteen by thirteen foot eleven addition on the right side of the house. The new addition will have no foundation and will sit on three individual concrete piers. There's also an existing front room on the right side that will be raised and rebuilt. The rebuilt portion will have a one-foot cantilever on both the front and right side. The only other additions to the footprint are a four-by-four front landing with one step and a four-by-four landing only at the rear door of the new addition. The existing lot coverage by structures is now nineteen point seven and our new proposal is twenty-one point seven, just for an additional two percent. The project does fall under Conservation Commission jurisdiction, which we did apply and receive a vote for an order of conditions for the project to proceed as proposed. And basically, that's the plan. This is, that area right here is the new addition, sorry about the yellow, I don't know how to get rid of that. So this is, that one corner is the new addition that's to be added, and that one little strip there and right there is the one-foot cantilever on the section that will be raised, so we're tearing that down and rebuilding that. So, basically that's the, those are the two parts that are being redone, and then the front step out back and the front landing out back. And again, I mean, there is also, we did add, everything that Conservation was looking for that was questioned there, that is done, so it is a closed hearing, so we did everything that they're looking for for compliance. There is a dry well that's also added, is no ridge height changes, everything is really pretty straightforward.
Turn it over to board questions?
Turn it over.
Sounds good. Alright, Scott, anything down there?
No, it seems to make very good sense to me, quite honestly.
Alright, thanks. Bob?
No, what floodplain is it in?
It's V-zone, but one part of it is V-zone and A-zone, the rest.
And just so the board knows, he submitted a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet-
Sounds good.
Showing the sum would be ninety-three four eighteen, but the appraisal of the structure, which, I assume they're going on the assessment for the structure?
Yes, you got it.
Is two hundred forty thousand eight hundred, which is within the range, fifty percent.
Sounds good, thank you, Bob. Scott?
Big, big feet sonotubes?
Yes.
So you're actually under your cantilever action some more with the big foot?
Yeah, on the, on the one closest to, yes. And they're going to get hand dug anyway just because of the fact that we're so close to the septic.
But you used big, the big-
Yeah, you got it, the big foot, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Scott. James?
No questions, thank you.
Jerry?
No questions.
Alright, no questions from me? Public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Not seeing anyone?
Move to close.
Second.
Closed made by Scott, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
Motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by Scott. Findings?
Two forty dash six ninety, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. They're doing a fourteen by three eleven addition on peers, then they're rebuilding a front room and renovating the kitchen and it has a cantilever. They submitted a FEMA worksheet showing they're within the fifty percent allowed for compliance with the floodplain for reservations, property is within a V-zone and an A-zone.
At all CONCOM's requirements?
Yeah, we don't have, put in the findings, we don't have CONCOM's decision, but testimony was they have, finalized their decision, which is another copy-
Yeah, they were writing the order of conditions.
It's another one then.
And that the engineering, and the engineering suggesting that they defer into CONCOM for erosion and sediment controls.
Right, but I think they had something that they wanted to make sure was protected.
Yeah, for the, to protect the right of way downstream catch basin, so we could put that in as a condition.
Probably optimal to add that.
Add that in.
Probably no increase in bedroom?
Yeah, they're actually not doing, no increase of bedrooms, they're not adding any bedroom space. Engineering has asked that the, they verify the septic location prior to-
Yeah, that was Board of Health.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Board of Health. The addition is going to be on peers, not a full foundation. I put in the finding that it includes lots six, six and B. The dry wells are proposed for the roof runoff. Did we have, we don't have anything from water? But we don't have a referral from Water Department, but we can condition that if water requires any-
I believe, I believe there was a referral and they wanted the water upgraded from three-quarter to one inch and the meter brought inside, and that's no problem.
You made provisions for that already-
Yep.
With the plan, so it kind of fits as per plan anyway.
Yeah, there you go. So we can put it in the findings that the applicant said that the Water Department was asking for an upgrade from a three-quarter, one-inch and the meter be installed inside
Anything else for findings?
Hmm.
Conditions?
Per plans, septic location is to be verified in the field prior to construction, that can be submitted to the Health Department for the copy to the zoning board of appeals. Any conditions that Conservation is going to have on their decision since we don't have it yet, and that we will want to add in there that there be soil erosion and sediment controls to protect the right of way and downstream catch basin, that's not in their decision.
Make every attempt to keep construction materials and, and equipment on-site.
On-site.
I would make every attempt, because you know where you're at, right there.
Yeah, we should probably put the hours like we do in the other ones, the construction hours.
So restrictive.
Subsection ninety-nine one affixing of legible, upon completion, applicant shall post the address, and a time limit for compliance. I put in the findings too, that on the septic, on the septic, that the Health Department did say that because it's on peers, the addition back, it does not require a setback from the leaching field.
Yeah, Scott had just said, just be careful when we're digging it.
That's why you're hand digging.
You got it.
I got you.
We've had the miss.
Been there.
We did, and we did per plans, right?
Per plans, yep.
Yep.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Alright, so that was a motion to approve with condition made by Bob and second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mr. Langen, thank you.
Thank you. I get to go home.
Thank you. Alright, up next, we have application one oh one dash twenty-one, Hill, trustee, four ninety Central Avenue, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the second floor of the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Alright, so application one oh one dash twenty-one, Carol S. Hill, trustee, care of Lawrence B. Cohen, Nixon Peabody LLP, one hundred Summer Street, Boston, Mass., has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition to the second floor of the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as four ninety Central Ave, East Falmouth. From the Health Department. It's September thirteenth, let's see. No septic system, records and health indicating a very old septic system, it's assessed for a five-bedroom, existing is a five-bedroom. Proposed is a six plus, a family room that meets Title V definition of a bedroom equaling seven, however, there are going to be nine rooms total, therefore, this is not an increase in flow above five as outlined in the definition of the bedroom. And just as a refresher, where the total number of rooms for a single-family dwelling exceeds eight, not including bathrooms, hallways, unfinished cellars, and unheated storage areas, the number of bedrooms presumed shall be calculated by dividing the total number of rooms by two and rounding down to the next lowest whole number. Conservation Commission issued a negative determination for the above referenced work, and there's a plan of references attached with their permit. From Engineering Division. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities, Central Avenue is a public right of way in this area, no alterations are proposed to the right of way, any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with Engineering Division. Atlantic Avenue is a private right of way in this area, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project was not directed to stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public rights of way. We recommend the board add a condition that requires additional dry wells for stormwater infiltration measures of the new roof area. Note that there is no increase in impervious, the proposed roof area falls within existing roof area, we defer to the board if infiltration should be required for this project. Portions of the stockade fence and a hedge are located within the public right of way of Central Avenue, this may require a license from the select board or removal. Water service and main are on the plans as required, the existing service is three-quarter inch line with a meter pit fed from an eight-inch main and central, the line should be upgraded to a one-inch per Falmouth Water Department standards and the meter pit removed. Replacement meter should be installed inside the renovated home, the increased pressure and flow demands due to the addition will require the upgrade. Planning, no comment, fire department, no issues with the project as drawn. They submitted a lot comparison worksheet and also a FEMA breakdown worksheet. Appraisal value is seven forty-seven five, improvement threshold three seventy-three seven fifty, for the, within the fifty percent. That's it.
Alright, and for this project, we'll be appointing Jerry as a voting member, and for the applicant, Attorney Flawory.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Carol Hill, trustee of the Shanklin Family Real Estate Trust, the owner of four ninety Central Avenue. Ms. Hill is here with us tonight along with her husband, Paul. They are seeking permission to renovate and modify the existing dwelling, all within the existing footprint, in order to create additional habitable space on the second floor. This property, four ninety Central Avenue, is located at the very southern end of Central, near the junction with Minot Road. It's a well-established residential area with smaller lots, largely seasonal in nature. This particular lot is seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet, it's located in the residential B zoning district, and it is in the AE thirteen flood zone. What exists there today is a one and a half story, five-bedroom dwelling with a detached shed, the footprint of that is just under twenty-nine hundred square feet. It is non-conforming in a number of ways, it's non-conforming to the front yard setback, being eleven point three feet where twenty-five is required, the side yard setback to the north, which is about six inches where ten feet is required, the rear yard setback, which is about six inches where ten feet is also required, the lot coverage by structure, which is thirty-six point five percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit, and also lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking, which is a forty-one point one percent, where forty is allowed by right. The existing ridge height of the structure is twenty-two feet three inches. This property has been in the Hills family for a little over thirty years, but their families have been members of the Minot community for over eighty years, their grandchildren are fifth-generation Minot community members. The extended family owns a number of properties in the area and the immediate vicinity of this property as well. This particular property has and continues to be used by many members of their immediate family, which continues to expand, so they're seeking to reconfigure the existing space by adding a bedroom on the first floor and creating a family room on the second floor, entirely within that existing footprint. Though a new bedroom is being added, does not increase the bedroom count under the Title V definitions and standards, and the, the changes will provide ample space for the family to enjoy. The ridge height of the addition is slightly higher than what exists at twenty-seven feet two and a half inches. This proposal will not result in a new nonconformity, will improve three existing nonconformities. A portion of the laundry room at the rear of the lot over here will be removed, that is going to increase that setback from six inches to two and a half feet. As part of that, the lot coverage by structure will minimally decrease, we're not taking a lot of credit for it because it's a very small decrease, but it's going down to thirty-six point three, and the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking is likewise decreasing. Due to the existing nonconformities, this proposal does require a special permit under two forty-three C and two forty sixty-nine E. Under two forty-three C, the threshold question is, is it substantially more detrimental than what exists? And you're supposed to consider whether or not it creates any new dimensional nonconformities, whether it impairs views and vistas, and it reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created, the non-conforming side yard setback is improved, and there are minimal improvements to the lot coverage percentages. There's no effect on views and vistas to the public, and the structure as designed remains consistent with the neighborhood, it's in line with surrounding properties, both in size and in scope. Given the design and layout of this, of this existing home and the proposed changes, there shouldn't be any effects of shadow on adjacent properties, there's no impact to the views and vistas from public ways, and the bedroom count will remain the same, so there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal embainments. Though this is located in the AE thirteen flood zone, the proposal is not a substantial improvement under FEMA standards, as was noted, we did submit the appraisal on the FEMA worksheet, and this is well under fifty percent of the allowable cost. The proposed alterations will significantly improve the space for the applicants. It will not create any new nonconformities and results in improvements to the existing nonconformities. The alteration is attractive in design and function, it's in character with the neighborhood in size and in scope, there's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the beneficial effects described. I believe this meets the requirements of two forty-three C, two forty sixty-nine E, and two forty two sixteen. Based on this information, I would ask that the board grant this request for a special permit. I probably spoke a little faster than usual tonight, and I apologize, but I think it's late and we all want to go home.
I think we're all speaking fast. Attorney Clower, thank you. Alright, board questions, Jerry, anything?
No questions.
James?
No, thank you.
Scott?
No, thank you.
Bob?
No.
Scott Peterson?
I'm all set, thank you.
I have something. Front yard setbacks remaining the same?
Mm-hmm.
And the sheds remaining?
Yes.
Does it for me? Alright, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Motion to close made by James, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry, thank you Jerry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, James. Findings?
Two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental, they're doing in addition to the second floor, property's in an AE thirteen flood zone, a FEMA worksheet has been provided, it's within the fifty percent allowable cost, so not considered substantial improvement for FEMA. Ridge height is going from twenty-two three to twenty-seven two and a half. It's a front yard nonconforming setback of eleven point three where twenty-five is required, side yard north point five where ten is required, and that will be approving to two point five. Lot coverage by structure, as well as structure, paving, and paving is going to have a de minimis improvement, the, by structure, thirty-six point five going to thirty-six point three, and the structure, paving, forty-one point one to forty point nine. Health Department says that the, it's a very old septic, they have no records. The improvement is allowed because on the older homes, you can list what Scott lists for the regulation. I don't have to read the whole thing. I don't have to read the whole thing. Oh, it's a, they have a, they had a negative determination with CONCOM.
Small enough that they don't meet the FEMA.
The current, current water is in a pit, and they will need to upgrade the service for the increased usage. Portions of the stockade fence and hedge are located within the public right-of-way of Central Avenue, and they should ask for a license from the Select Board or removal.
No opposition at the hearing. No opposition filed.
There you go.
All right.
If I could ask a quick point of clarification on the license, if that could just be issued prior to CO?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just usually what we do is request that you file.
And then prior to the CO, get the.
Perfect.
Is that doing for?
Yeah.
Conditions?
Well, per plans, a water meter must be removed. A new meter will have to be inside the structure. I'm going to get to the upgrade. The line should be upgraded to a one-inch service to meet Falmouth Water Department standards. Existing service is a three-quarter inch line from an eight-inch main. Oh, put in the findings that it's in an AE thirteen flood zone and that they submitted the FEMA worksheet. Oh, and then put in there that this, prior to the CO, applicant should request a license from the Select Board for the portions of stockade fence and hedge that are located within the public right-of-way of Central Ave, or remove those items from the public right-of-way.
Yep, so it won't likely be a CO. CEOs are usually just for new houses. It would be prior to probably final inspection.
Anything else for conditions?
I think there's, I think it's all set, but I don't know. I always think I missed something, so.
Well, it's going to have to do. All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, up next we have application one oh-two dash twenty-one. Clower, ten Beach Plum Path in Hatchville, appealing building commissioner's determination slash request for a modification of comprehensive permit number six dash nineteen to allow a shed.
Chairman, you know that of every aspect of this project, I've recused myself and will do so at this point.
Oh, sure. Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Scott, Merry Christmas. Go ahead or anything else.
Good for now?
Okay, application one oh-two dash twenty-one. Patricia A. Clower, ten Beach Plum Path, Hatchville, Mass. has filed an appeal with the Falmouth Town Clerk pursuant to Mashburner Law's forty A, subsections eight and fifteen, and two forty-two oh-two of the Code of Falmouth, appealing the building commissioner's determination, request for a modification of comprehensive permit number zero-zero-six dash one-nine pursuant to chapter forty B to allow a shed. Subject property is ten Beach Plum Path, Hatchville, Mass. From Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Beach Plum Path is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. ONCOM, the project appears outside of our jurisdiction. Planning, no comment. Water, no comment. Health Department, the septic leaching area is near the proposed shed. There is no setback requirement for a shed if it's not on a poured foundation. If the shed is to be on a slab, it's a ten-foot setback, but additionally, the applicant must locate their inspection ports and distribution box to ensure the shed is not impeding access regardless of the type of foundation. Then we have six letters of support, one opposition, and one with comments. First, December fifteenth, from Alicia McIntyre regarding ten Beach Plum Path. Good evening. My name is Alicia McIntyre of six Beach Plum Path, Falmouth. I am writing to you in absolute support to approve the request to allow a shed on the property of ten Beach Plum Path. From the day I first moved into my home, Patricia Patty Clower and her husband Kevin have been the most wonderful neighbors to have. When I first introduced myself and I told her I had two children, she immediately offered the use of her shed to us as total strangers for my children's bikes. She also made it very known that the shed would be, would house basic yard tools and equipment that we, her neighbors, could use. She held to that promise. On numerous occasions, she has allowed me access to the shed to borrow rake or clippers to trim low branches that interfered with lawnmower. She has even used the same lawnmower that is housed in the shed to mow my lawn many times. The shed in question is beautiful and blends right in with the existing home style and painted to match. It is not an eyesore and does not impact me negatively in any way as her direct neighbor. Because of her kindness especially, I would not, I would not seek approval for my own shed on the lot known as six Beach Plum Path. Before meeting Patty and her family, moving in, I had, I had and still have no intentions of having my own shed. I strongly believe that by allowing her to have a shed, it will not set a precedence for other homeowners in the development to obtain their own. I ask that to whomever reads this email thinks of their own neighbors, can you say the same kindness of your own? How neighborly are your neighbors? Patty has naps a dream of a neighbor. You could not ask for a better person in her family to live next door to. We have created a community of homeowners in Beach Plum Path. This development has allowed me personally to become a homeowner and achieve a lifelong dream of mine because of the forty-B program. I'm a single mother who is a business professional working as a banker in Mashpee. These homes are beautiful three-bedroom homes with one-car garages. These garages do not have adequate space for equipment and storage beyond a car. The stairs into my home even make pulling into it and parking very difficult. Yes, these homes are in smaller plots of land, but still well-spaced. Dan McClone has done a wonderful job in creating these and also helping to solve the town's major housing crisis amongst hard-working individuals that keep the Cape's economy going with three forty-B homes in the development. I will be in attendance of tomorrow's hearing and full support of Patty and her family to allow the shed on their property. Thank you for your time in reading this email. Should you have any further questions or concerns, I can be reached by email or phone listed below. And again, that's Alicia McIntyre, and it said she was at number six. This is from a John Boncheck. Hello, to who this concerns, my name is John Boncheck. I live at nine Beach Plum Path. I received a letter in the mail about my neighbor Patty at number ten regarding her shed in backyard. I live across the street and would like to comment that I cannot even see or notice her shed from my house. Do not believe it makes the house have any more value to the home, and I support the shed being in her yard. And again, that's John Boncheck at nine. All right, to whom it may concern, as a homeowner on Beach Plum Path, I support the shed that stands in Patty Clower's yard. The shed is on her property and therefore should remain. And this is Lori Peclean. It does not give her address. Scott Peclean, I am a resident of Beach Plum Path. I do not have any issues with Patty's shed in her yard. Again, it doesn't give their address. Molly and James Aiken, twelve Beach Plum Path. Dear Mr. Hare and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing to express our support for Patricia Clower's application one oh-two dash twenty-one to modify comprehensive permit number zero-zero-six dash one-nine to allow for a shed on her property at ten Beach Plum Path. We are Ms. Clower's neighbors and fully supportive of keeping a shed on her property. Her shed has become an important community resource with Ms. Clower generously sharing yard maintenance tools with her neighbors. Ms. Clower has become a mentor to ourselves and other first-time single-family homeowners and has shared both her tools and know-how to keep us, to help us maintain our yards and homes. Far from detracting from the neighborhood, Ms. Clower's shed has become a source of neighborhood cohesion. Sincerely, Molly and James Aiken. Again, that's number twelve. This is a Laura Taylor. I am writing in regard to notification I received via mail for application one oh-two dash twenty-one. Patricia A. Clower, ten Beach Plum Path, Hatchville, Mass. I am a neighbor of Ms. Clower and reside at nineteen Beach Plum, Hatchville, Mass. Unable to attend the meeting on this matter, so I wanted to write the board to express my support. Having walked and driven by Ms. Clower's house dozens of times, I can tell you that the proposed shed on her property is not a mass obstruction. Appears to be a very minor addition to her yard. I've also read the description of the project and agree with the characterization of the shed as an insubstantial change, and that's Laura Taylor. Again, at nineteen. And then this is from Joanne Brianna Gartner, four fifty-six Locust Field Road, East Falmouth. Dear Zoning Board members, I'm writing to oppose the granting of a modification on ten, on Beach Plum Path, the forty-B development off Locust Field Road that would grant number ten Beach Plum Path access to construct a shed on their lot. Because there are twelve homes in the development, once permission is granted for one shed, there's precedent set for eleven other homeowners who also request appeals to build structures on their lots. The main problem with the large development brings out, wait, sorry, the many problems with this large development being put on this small piece of land and lots being divided up so that three-bedroom houses with two-car garages were in some instances put on lots of less than one-sixteenth of an acre were discussed at great length at several meetings attended by neighbors appealing for common sense to prevail in their building. The development was approved with considerable restrictions and conditions set upon it by your board. The conditions did not allow for sheds in other buildings to also be located on the properties. I would ask that permission not be granted to allow it at present. Then we have a letter from a Joe Bento, and he's at four forty Locust Field Road, a Joe Bento Jr. This is, says, this afternoon I had a conversation with Mr. Patamas at the end of my driveway located Beach Plum Drive, East Falmouth. He had parked his car blocking my exit from my driveway. He was reading my signs about agricultural zoning when I approached him to move his car. I recognized who he was when I got closer. I'd introduced myself and mentioned the ZBA conversation at the end of the meeting on ten twenty-one about Mr. Bill Marster's comments on how the ZBA conditions on Beach Plum condos were not being enforced. Mentioned that Mr. Marster's had a lot to say and that it might have been better for Mr. Marstons to take it to the Board of Selectmen. We discussed one of the conditions set up by the ZBA in reference to not having any sheds on the building site lots. His reply was that we should complain about it. I must say it was very refreshing to discuss ZBA issues and receive replies in the open instead of in the controlled meeting atmosphere. Then Joe Bento, four forty Locust Field Road. And that's it. Six.
Before we turn it over to Attorney Clower, Jerry, that email was read into the record.
I have no objection to it. I think it was accurate representation. I don't think I have to recuse myself for anything in that email. We did not discuss the specifics of this. As he said, you know, him and his neighbor, you know, one of his neighbors would generally opposed to the development. He felt he couldn't enjoy his deck. And when I got on to say, you know, you should file the appropriate complaints. So we did not discuss the particular applicant in front of us.
All right, so I understand what you're saying, Jerry, but when it comes to the Massachusetts Conflict of Interest law, it's any specific conflict or an appearance of conflict?
I don't think it's either. I'm required to go out and visit to say, well, not required, I should. As I drove out, I saw a big red violation from the building commissioner. I stopped to read it, and Mr. Bento came out. So I don't think that's an appearance or it's an actual conflict of interest.
Mr. Hare, if I may, I have no objection to, I don't feel as though it presents a conflict of interest, if it's any.
So I guess, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Clower?
My only comment would be the letter or the complaint. The complaint was from Friday, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. When was the actual application made for this?
November third. The date stamp's on the front page.
Was November third.
Look back.
Sorry.
And then open, open that front cover, and then the date stamp is on the.
Oh, it's November third. So we did have, I think we were all here for the public comment that Mr. Marston made at the open meeting portion. The zoning administrator was very clear with us that night that she expected that we would be getting an application that was amended. Until an application comes in, the board, no board member should be going to a site to discuss something that hasn't been submitted.
I didn't go to the site. I drove by the street. I didn't, I didn't get out of my car. I just drove by Beach Plum Ave. I knew it was coming, so, you know.
So Mike, what I'm saying is that the complaint mentions there was discussion on a shed which is in this application.
There was discussion.
The member has said there was discussion.
But not on this application.
There was discussion of an item that the board member was aware would be coming in front of this board.
Not on this application.
Were you aware that this board was going to discuss a shed?
Not at that time, I don't.
Did you, did you attend?
First of all, I, I'm not going to recuse myself, and that's my right by proceeding the applicant.
Then I would ask, then I would ask that the chairman, as the chairman, has the right.
Under what authority?
Under the authority of the chairman. We have a quorum.
The procedures.
Jerry, Jerry, it's the, it's the same, it's the same section of the procedures that you're citing from, Jerry. It's seven oh-two, Board Procedures, Section B. And I'll read the entire thing for the record. Recusal. Members should protect themselves from receiving information about a pending or upcoming application or appeal outside of a public hearing. Members who inadvertently receive such information should recuse themselves from the public hearing on that matter. Note, members who are town meeting members are fully, are, are allowed to fully participate at town meeting in any article that may have bearing on an application or appeal unless such participation would violate the procedural due process rights of an applicant or interested party. The board or applicant may ask a member to recuse at the time of the hearing. However, ultimately, it is the member's own decision whether or not to recuse. A refusal to recuse could lead to court intervention, including an injunction or appeal. So that's the, that's the entire session.
And I understand that. I've read it plenty of times. It's should. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a conflict on intent to a conflict there.
All right, and for the record, as the chair, and I've thought about this all night, I do think that there is at least an apparent conflict of interest. I'm not saying it's, it's nothing personal against you.
I just want to know what the basis is. The man came out, he asked me to move the car, what I was doing. We did not discuss the project in front of us today.
You, according to the email, Jerry, it's, it states that you made the suggestion to file a complaint with the building commissioner about a shed if they didn't like that condition.
I don't remember what we're talking about there. I do know he was, he was complaining about something.
All right. Well, that's.
I don't recall that. That might, that may not be an accurate description of what was said.
All right, well, that's, that's what it says in the email. That's what it says in the file.
Of course.
So, and I know I just said what that section says, so please consider this a request from me as the chair for you to recuse yourself on this application.
I don't, I don't think it reaches that intent.
Chair has a right to appoint voting members.
That's true.
So if, if Mr. Patamas does refuse to recuse, which saying is his right, then I would request that the chair elect the voting members not to include Mr. Patamas.
And I'd like to ask for clarification if there, and we had a legal case on this. If there were five members present, the five members should vote unless, in fact, you know what I'm talking about.
So the quorum, a quorum.
I know what a quorum is. I'm, this is to the chair. I'm asking him to specify what the authority he has. An applicant is entitled to five impartial members.
Where does that state that?
That's what it says. We're five-member boards.
Where does that state that?
It's four, Jerry.
Four, I'm sorry, four.
It's only four. And it's been a longstanding, it's, it's not.
It's four, correct.
It's four. It's been a longstanding tradition. I won't say policy or anything like that because it's not in our procedures or policies that, out of the kindness of our own heart. it's not in our procedures or policies, that out of the kindness of our own hearts, instead of going forward with four, we often appoint five.
And I've recused myself in the past when it's appropriate. One time, I didn't have to. So I have more than met this, this requirement.
I understand that, Jerry, and I am super cautious about that myself. It's been a long time since I've had to recuse myself, but I have in the past.
I know. We all have.
Many different things.
And I could also file a complaint that I was unfairly removed from the board.
Just?
Yep.
All right.
So you can do what you, you think's appropriate. I can do what I think is appropriate.
And then, and then the board members could file an ethics complaint against one of their own members because of the complaint.
Let's not, if you think it's an ethics complaint, you should file an ethics, don't threaten.
It is an ethics complaint.
It's not, well, in your opinion.
I, I think it's the appearance of a conflict.
It's the appearance, which is an ethics complaint. I don't even think that's debatable.
Which is what I've been saying, Jerry.
Yeah, I know.
I don't want you to take it personally.
Well, I'm not taking it personally.
But it's, but it's the appearance of a conflict. Anyone else, well, there's only a handful of people left, but anyone watching on TV or when they read the record, when they read that email, it's, it's the appearance of the conflict.
And I, if the email should adequately respond on what I said and that I did not think I have it, the procedure said I should, I don't have to. The applicant said he would be agreeable to it. So, and I understand where Bob's coming from. I don't think you've ever excused a sitting member from voting, and that could be presidential, precedential. I mean, I think before you do that, you should make sure you're on firm legal ground.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Oh, I appreciate where you're coming from, and I think you spoke clearly on it. But I also think there was one other board member that either, you did not raise this to me when we met out in the hall. I said, yes, I'm aware of it. You did not say anything else. It appears that another board member brought it up, which is his right. You're reacting to that?
Well, he brought it up.
I'm actually just reacting to reading the letter in the file.
Okay.
Which, which, just so everyone knows, is what I have to do as the clerk. I have to give it.
Oh, no, no, I agree. I'm not.
But when you say that no one else has, you've had to remove someone, quite honestly, most members of boards, if this ever came up, would just immediately say, fine, it appears like a conflict, I'll recuse and go on.
But I think we've gone over. The chair can do what he wants. I'm not recusing. I think he's exceeding his bounds, bounds as the chair. That could be an ethical question in itself.
Certainly could.
So.
All right.
So my request to the chair is because we have a four-member quorum with Member Peterson that I think the chair should not include Mr. Patamas in this case because the email that was written that was submitted as a complaint in the file from an abutter, it could be agreed by whatever decision we have. It shows there could be an appearance of a conflict, and if we go forward with Mr. Patamas on this, because of that appearance, it opens it up to appeal, but it also forces a butters' appeal. It puts the monetary issues onto the butters. This isn't even a hugely complicated case. It's not like this hasn't happened before.
I think you're reading a lot into the motion.
I don't think so, Jerry.
I mean, you're reading the motion I should be removed, the reasons we discussed.
And that's the reason we discussed, and I would also say this isn't the first time this has happened.
Of course, it's not the first time.
So, good.
I recuse, I recuse myself in the past when it's appropriate.
No, it's not the first time you've refused to recuse.
I know, I recuse myself voluntarily. Don't start attacking me personally on.
I'm not, I'm not.
I've got letters from Frank.
All right. We're going down a road that I didn't intend to go down.
I, I agree with you, and I think that.
I'll go down the road if you want.
No, that's, all right. All right. So the way I've been doing it anyway tonight, I've been alternating with the alternating members back and forth, the last application. Jerry was appointed to for this application. I'll just appoint Scott. And Attorney Clower, out of an abundance of caution, I'll just say that you have four voting members for this project.
I believe I only need a supermajority because it's a comprehensive permit modification.
So, yeah, I mean, I'll let you present, yes, but that was going to be one of my questions actually about, well, you're appealing, appealing building commissioner's determination, and it's also a request for a modification.
It's really, the issue's really the, the modification of the comprehensive permit because the building commissioner's determination ceases to be an issue if the comprehensive permit is modified. So when I submitted the initial application, it was just for the modification. Ms. Stockman suggested that we include it as an appeal of the building commissioner's determination, but again, I think that ceases, it becomes a moot point if the permit is modified.
All right. Very good. So I'll agree with you there that if the board is only taking up a comprehensive permit, then a simple majority is necessary. All right.
I think, I know what it feels like for my kids when mom and dad fight now. That was, for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town. In an turn of events I did not see coming, I am here tonight representing my mother, Patricia Clower, the owner of 10 Beech Plum Path, the applicant in this matter. My mother is here with us this evening. This is a request for modification of a comprehensive permit by what we believe is an insubstantial change regarding the development of the property now known as Beech Plum Path, formerly 430 Locust Field Road, which is your decision number 06-19. This permit allows for the construction of 12 single-family homes, three of which were to be restricted as affordable. Specifically, we are requesting the allowance of a shed on this particular parcel, which is Lot 3 of the approved plan. The shed in question is just about 164 square feet. The board is undoubtedly familiar with this property, but I think it's important to provide some background information relative for your consideration. My parents entered into agreement to purchase this property in August of 2020 after selling their home in Sandwich that they had been in for 25 years. Theirs was the first unit that was finished, was completed last May, and they closed immediately after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. They purchased this property in order to downsize to be closer to my family and because of my father's failing health. They wanted to be sure that my mother was in a good situation should he continue to decline. The house was just about perfect for them. There's not much, the downside, though, is there's not much room for storage, especially for tools. My father was a union ironworker, and he was disabled his last 30 years in a work injury, but he remained what I would call a tinkerer until the end. Always had a workshop, always puttering, always doing side projects. The single-family, a single-car garage on the site is fairly small to begin with. It's tight with yard tools and a vehicle, let alone with any small work area. So my parents used this space for, for a small workshop and for parking. Based on that, my mother called the building department and asked what was required for a shed. She confirmed it was under 200 square feet and was told no building permit was necessary, just to make sure it's three feet off the property lines. She ordered the shed, it was delivered and installed in late June or early July, at its current location in the backyard. Shortly thereafter, an abutter made a complaint to the town, and the zoning enforcement officer, Jonathan Dickinson, reached out regarding the shed. At that point, my mother spoke with Ms. Stockman and with Mr. Dickinson and came to a better understanding of the limitations and restrictions of the comprehensive permit. She had sought to do the right thing by calling the building department, but didn't realize that the comprehensive permit complicates the question of what's required for a shed. This is also about the time I got involved because I hadn't been until then. Through conversations with Ms. Stockman and Ms. Dickinson, it was determined that really the best and only way to proceed was to seek a modification of the comprehensive permit. I reached out to the engineer who had done the original plan because we needed to update the site plan to reflect the actual as-built of the deck and the patio and, I'm sorry, the deck and the landing and the driveway. And at that point, once we received the revised site plan, we'd be submitting an application for modification. I was advised at that time that the, it would take some time for the plan. The engineers, this was over the summer, were all very, very busy, and I conveyed that to Mr. Dickinson in late July. Obtaining that plan did take some time due to a backlog of work, but prior to receiving the revised plan, we received an enforcement order from our interim building commissioner, Mr. Gore. I immediately followed out to, reached out to Mr. Gore and followed up with correspondence after our conversation. And this is a quote from the letter I sent to him. I said, "I was somewhat surprised to receive the letter as when I spoke to Mr. Dickinson in August, I had told him that we engaged the services of Mike Borselli at Falmouth Engineering to provide us with lot-specific site plan so we could apply for a modification of the comprehensive permit affecting the entire development. As I recall that conversation, we had left that Mr. Dickinson would check in with me in about 60 days due to the expected timeframe for receipt of the plan. If I'm mistaken in my recollection, I certainly apologize. Please know that the owners are not ignoring this issue, but we cannot proceed with an application until the plan is received. This matter has been in the queue for Mr. Borselli since my conversation with Mr. Dickinson, but he had not completed the plan as of yet. Following receipt of your letter last week, I spoke with Mr. Borselli, and he's moving this to the forefront." Based on that conversation with Mr. Gore and the letter I had sent, he did, sent a letter agreeing to extend the zoning enforcement pending submission of an application. All of which brings us to this evening's hearing, in which the applicant is requesting a modification of the comprehensive permit to allow the shed to remain. There's a number of reasons the board can and should allow this request. The resulting lot coverage by structure on this specific lot is 24.1, which is allowable by special permit if this wasn't a 40B. It would be allowable on any lot, just about anywhere in town. This property shouldn't be treated differently necessarily just because it is a 40B. The 40B development itself is, I think, most analogous to a cluster subdivision. When we have cluster subdivisions in which open spaces put aside, returned for smaller lots, and there was a fair amount of open space on this project, lot coverage by structures, by structure of up to 40% is allowed. This is far under that number. This particularly comprehensive is actually silent with regards to sheds. The board has, in some cases, specifically stated that developments may not include accessory structures, including sheds. That's not the case here. I reviewed the last eight comprehensive permits that the board has issued. Three of them specifically stated that no sheds were allowed. Four were silent on the issue, and one allowed only certain lots to have sheds. It stands to reason that if the decision does not specifically exclude it, one or some of the lots could be allowed by a modification of the comprehensive permit. The shed is practical and attractive in design, and it is truly almost unnoticed. My mother has two small dogs, and we installed a fence around the backyard after consultation with Ms. Stockman to make sure that was permitted. The shed is barely visible about it, above it, and even then, it's really only visible if you're approaching from the west. Foreseeing the argument against it, and that was echoed in one of the letters, someone's going to say, well, if you allow for this property, you have to allow for all the properties. But that's simply not true. This board has reiterated time and again that every decision is fact-dependent, and a decision isn't necessarily precedent. The shed holds a number of yard tools, also deck furniture, bikes, and other usual items you find in a shed. As we discussed, the garage isn't large enough to house those items and a vehicle. And while storing some items in the basement through a bulkhead might be a viable option for many people, it's really not in this case. My mother now lives alone, and I say this at the risk of getting hit by her, but she is getting older, and carrying heavy items up and down the stairs is less than ideal. Strong and strapping, though I might be, I'm not always available. All this is to say that the board can certainly agree to the proposed modification of the, of the comprehensive permit, and it can do so without a derogation from the nature and intent of the original approval. Approving this request is reasonable, fair, and comes without detriment to anyone, a butters or otherwise. There is nothing about this request that marks a detrimental effect. I would ask that the board approve this request, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Scott, any questions?
I'm still relatively new to the process, and, and again, these types of approvals are, are long in nature, we heard one today, that's, you know, been roughly a year. And one of the conditions was that there shall be no as-right changes, another, no other structures without further approval. And the precedence piece, I guess I do struggle with because as soon as you've allowed one, I don't see how that, you know, with a kind of a litmus test for myself, how I could go to the next applicant and say, no. So I guess I'm, I'm struggling with.
Sure.
What transpired.
Sure.
These are, these are very difficult, they're, they're long in nature. There's been a lot of optics on them. You're very smart, your mom's very smart. It, it's tough.
So.
And it's already existing here, so.
And that's a perfectly.
That's where I'm struggling.
That's perfectly fair question, Mr. Peterson. I think the difference here is this is not the developer who is taking an action. This is, this is a different design than you see on a lot of these 40Bs. Most of them are townhouses or duplexes. These are standalone, single-family structures that each have their own defined lot. So that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is that it is truly fact-dependent because you can look at lot coverage, you can look at setbacks, you can look at layouts and say, it doesn't make sense here, or it doesn't make sense here. Here's a situation where we have a shed that's located more than 10 feet off the backyard line, it's 12 feet off the backyard line, it's 10 feet off the side yard line, well behind the house, and it's truly shielded by, by, by a fence. It is, there's nothing here that acts as a detriment. There are other properties, even within its development, where a shed might not make sense. There's some where the house is located against the back lot line. There's some where they're located against the side yard lines. I think it can be looked at as independently and, and on the facts of just the question in front of you. As to the process, I mean, I think I explained what happened. There was no, you know, there was no ill intent there. She, she did exactly what she, what we would want people to do. It's, the, the comprehensive permit does say that there's no accessory structures without modification of the, of the, of the, of the decision itself, but, and I'm not claiming a shed's not a structure, but a shed doesn't really fall within the definition of a structure because it's not, it's on cinder blocks. It's, it's not affixed to a point on the ground. I'm, I'm not going to claim that a shed is not a structure, but you can see where someone might not think it is. And it's, it's a situation where if, if you're not well-versed in zoning, which most people aren't, I can see why they might not realize that. I, I don't think that this is a situation where someone went out and tried to sidestep the regulations. She did exactly what we would ask for most homeowners to do, and since then, we've been working to rectify it since it can, since it's become an issue, we've worked to rectify it.
Thank you for your response.
Scott, Bob?
Do you have a plan that just shows where the septic system is?
I do. I have a septic as-built, and the, the shed is on, it's on cinder blocks, and it is located on top of the septic, but the septic is an H20 system, and I confirm that with Mike Borselli.
So just regarding the, the Health Department's comment, do you know that if it's covering any, let me just pull it up so you can keep the order.
The D-box or the hatch?
Yeah, the ports. He thought it appeared it might, so.
I mean, it, to the extent, if it was covering the D-box and it needed to be accessed, it is on cinder blocks and could be shifted.
All right. So, but, but do you know if it's covering the inspection ports or the D-box?
I don't.
Okay. There's one question I have.
All right. James? Now, my question's been asked. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So your, your testimony is that if you needed to move it, it could be moved. I'm familiar with sheds like this. I've seen one woman move it with a jack. So, I mean, you'll, you'll check that out and get back to us, or move it, or?
If, if, if it needed to be moved, it would be moved. If, if there was an issue with the septic, it would be moved.
And it could be moved.
Yeah, and it's not on a slab.
Anything else, Jerry? All right. My issue was already taken care of. Public comment then? Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application?
Phil Marston, 426 Locust Field, I'm the abutter. And the shed went in days after they moved in. When I called and said, hey, there's a shed, I was told by McLean that he had already talked to Kevin and that it was a structure. So it's, so a shed is not, a shed is not a structure, so you don't need a permit, blah, 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 blah. Now, that was over six months ago, and what we're talking about is enforcement. And we thought when we got rid of Rod, there might be some enforcement. Well, there hasn't been. This has gone on constantly since the beginning of this project. All the things that he mentioned on why they wanted the shed was why we put that in that there wouldn't be sheds, so it wouldn't be crowded, so there wouldn't be six, uh, 12 of them there. And all the conditions that have been put in, none of them have been enforced. You know, you talk, okay, you talk about the sign. You see a sign laying on the ground, but you don't see one standing up saying, "Stop," at the end of the street. You didn't miss, you missed that. And this morning, there's a guy working at 6:30 when I'm down back. Last week, the week before, when they were paving, they started at 6:00 in the morning. I mean, this is constant. This has gone on for two years. Two years we've listened, listened to all this. There's just so much bull crap. You know, the work hours, uh, now, you know, oh, Cr, uh, McClone just put seven, uh, seven braces on a fence on my property, try, and raised the fence to eight feet. I put a complaint on that, and that, I think that's the first complaint that's been followed through on at all.
Mr. Marston, I, I understand your longstanding concerns regarding-
Yes.
...the entire development.
Yes.
Can you focus your comments to this specific-
Okay, well, it's, what it is, it's, the focus is on, uh, the, the, uh, conditions, and enforcement of the conditions. And here we go, you know, now we're going on from, McClone didn't, uh, do anything, and they didn't enforce it, and now we're going on to second generation, have to live by that? Christ, I tried to get out of there, I couldn't. When they put that development in, put my house right down the tubes, and Joe's house down the tubes, where nobody wants to buy him, the value is gone, and I'm stuck there. And then, the more you see, you walk out, you, all the nice little pictures of the front of the house, that looks fine. When you look out from the back and you look down, it looks like the back of Walmart. And then you're gonna put sheds at every one of them, 'cause like you said, if one gets them, they can all get them. It's just like when they do a dock down at the rivers. One person pays the big price, only they didn't have to. And it's just, it's all enforcement. When's somebody gonna get some goddamn guts here and do something? And stop this? It goes on constantly. Every, Maroni was in here, that, that whole project went to hell. That, it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Sir?
Joe Bento, 440 Locust Field Road, I'm in the butter. I know everybody wants to go home, so I'm gonna make this really quick and easy. A year and a half, two years, we've been fighting this development. Your gentleman put conditions down. One of the conditions were no sheds. Honor your commitment. No cond, no sheds. It's in black and white. Honor it. That's all I'm gonna have to say. I also have a butter about Mr. Potamus as well. The day that he and I spoke, he was staying, looking at that sign that I had, that Mr. Marston's had, above the agricultural and everything else. He mentioned to me that the sign was illegal. I said, "All right." Several days later, I get a sticker on it saying it was a legal sign. I don't know how it got there, but it got there. But anyways, that's, he wasn't reading that sign with the sticker already on it, that said it was illegal. That was put on after, and I'm quite sure I know how it got there. But anyways, the fact that the gentleman, the condition was there, no sheds, honor your commitment, gentlemen, and do what you would, said you have to do. Thank you.
Mr. Beto?
Thank you, Mr. Beto. No.
No, he, he mentioned my name-
Jerry, Jerry, no.
He mentioned.
Jerry.
He's inaccurate. Then I'll correct it later. There was a red sticker there.
You can correct it later with me in the parking lot-
No, 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 no. This is about what he just said.
Not during a public hearing, or with him some other time.
Well, I have to ask him a question?
No. All right. It's 11:03, we voted to extend the board's business to 11 o'clock. I'll make the motion to extend to 11:30.
Second.
Motion was made by myself, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. It's till 11:30 we go.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Um, two quick points. One, I would point out that us being here tonight is the direct result of enforcement. That's exactly what enforcement's designed to do, is to have people come and rectify the situation, which is what we're seeking to do this evening. I would also point out that there is not a condition saying there's no sheds allowed. There are a number of permits that do say no sheds allowed. This permit does not. This permit simply says accessory structures must be approved by, uh, a modification of the comprehensive permit, which is what we're here tonight asking for.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, Attorney Clower. Any other follow-up questions from the board?
No.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, motion to close.
We can, uh, yeah.
Yeah, motion to close?
Second.
All right. Motion to close made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep, sorry. Okay. unanimous, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. Would it be fair to have more discussion?
Sure. So, um, I don't believe there was any ill intent of the applicant. I'm sure she did check with the Building Department, and they gave what the general regulations were for sheds. I wish that the Building Department had taken the location and seen it was a 40B comprehensive The question of if you do it for one, can you just do it for one or for others? For all the 40Bs that I've done, and even the classes I've attended, you have to have an equity in the complex. And if you do allow a change of this for one, you are gonna have to put an equity for others. Just like when the, um, developer came to us and asked for a modification to add the rooms over the garages. And we ended up allowing that, but we had to have them on the market rate units as well as the affordable units. Because of some of the odd lots in this development, um, some of the lots, like there was one across the street that sits long, they put a shed in, you couldn't put it in their backyard, it would pretty much be in a front yard. You know, the, maybe this comes down on the developer. I mean, we were very specific on this with the developer. Did he please let anyone know that buys, that buys in this project? Give them a copy of the permits? I thought they should have been attached to the homeowner's documents, so that people that buy in these projects know what is allowed, what isn't allowed, and if something can be applied for what it could be applied for. That comes on the developer, it comes on something that should be reviewed when a, you know, when a project, when a house is purchased. On the conditions that we have, you know, Condition 11 specifically states, "No creation of any other structures without zoning board approval." Condition 35 says that any changes made prior to approval of the board does risk a denial, and that whatever that improvement is must be undone. And Condition 41 clearly states that all our conditions run with the land, there's no expiration. We did have a letter from someone in Locust Field, I think it was a Brianna Gartner, that lived in the area. It seemed like she might have been one of the neighbors that came. I was on the original decision. It was a very highly attended, me, every single meeting was highly attended by the surrounding neighbors. And one of the issues they all had was the amount of density on the site. And we made adjustments to allow this project at the density it's at now. I think it's unfair to now suddenly say, "Now we can approve sheds." We had meetings for months on these projects. We had arguments over heights of fences and trees, and one of the biggest issues from all the people that came was density, density, density. I wish I knew other things that I know now that have nothing to do with Ms. Clower, but, you know, you drive through the project now, I'm assuming she may be parking next because the driveways aren't big enough. I tried to turn around and one, I had nowhere to park. You know, there, there were issues with the project itself that I wished I thought about earlier, so you could have made a wider driveway or something that's easier access. But I think it's a very slippery slope for a board to change something like this on a 40B permit, and expect that this is a one lot change. If somebody else came through us at this development, or one of the affordable units came for the development, that would be an automatic, because a market rate unit has a shed, and I'm an affordable unit, and it's inequitable if you don't allow me to have one. The developer came back to us to ask that the basements be allowed to be finished, and I don't know if this will affect stuff in the future, but we allowed the basements to be finished, with a caveat saying, "If you finish the basements, you're not gonna have any storage." But they wanted to do it, and they, so we've gone out of our way to adjust some of the plans. I, I, I feel for the applicant, 'cause I don't think it was done with ill intent, but I don't think this should be something that's allowed. We're gonna hit this on every 40B project we have. They're all gonna start coming in for modifications, and asking for all sorts of additional items. And this isn't a one, this isn't a one decision allowance, so because of what we put in the conditions, and because of what meetings that we sat through, and all the input we had from the developers, the neighbors, and everyone else, I would not be in favor of allowing them the shed. But again, I don't think the applicant did anything wrong, and she did her process. And I think the Building Department should have told her that, "Go upstairs, this is a comprehensive permit, and you would need to go and try to file for this first before making the actual change."
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I would think this is another case where there was interaction with the building commissioner, who speaks for the town, maybe he's, didn't speak accurately, but he spoke for the town. The other thing is, I, not a lawyer, and at least we've got two or three of them in the room, I think precedent is based on case by case, the lot, and things like that. I think it's presumptuous to say, "Yes, we might have to approve some additional sheds." I don't think we have to, I think it's case-specific. I think one of the things we can learn from this and some of the others is, is we should be more specific. If we don't want sheds, we should say sheds. We did, we did not say that, and I think it's, as Bob had said, it was an honest mistake, and I don't think, at this point in time, since the shed is in, I'm not sure if it's an affordable unit or not, uh, it's, it would, could be as draconian. As Bob said, I don't know if we have any emails from DCHD on this thing. I mean, I've gone to plenty of these meetings where they advise, and that's why we have a public hearing process that, in due process, case by case. Precedent is not, just because you did it once, you always have to do it now. I'll defer to, uh, the other attorneys on it.
Right, but, you know, again, Condition 11, no other structures without further approval. There's a structure there now. I, I, I just struggle with that. That, it's, it's not the process that the whole board went through, and I, I empathize, I wish it never got this far, but I, I kinda concur with Bob's comments earlier.
As far as the inequity, so when we did projects that somebody wanted to add garages, we had to make sure that so many of the affordable units had garages, if the other units had garages, decks, sunrooms, whatever it is. Because when you drive into one of these 40B developments, from the eyes of the state, you shouldn't see anything that stands out, that shows a highlighted difference between a market rate unit and an affordable unit. And when you drive down the street, and again, when you're going up the street, I don't see it. The house is there, it's on the other side. But as soon as I get by the house and turn around, looking down, it, it stands out. It just stands out as a difference, as one difference versus any of the other properties. And this was a really increased, you know, the density on this was, was different. I mean, if, if anyone recalls when we had the original meetings, I mean, I, I think, I think the reason this started off troublesome in advance was because instead of an app, a developer just saying, "I wanna apply to put in a 40B," he pulled a permit for one house. Nobody expected it. And then, I think that's where it all started with, you know, what's happening is we just didn't expect, expect it. But the equity of a 40B complex is, you can't see the differences. And that's why some developers don't decide not to put them in. I mean, we had one that was on Shore Street that didn't go through, and they thought, they didn't like the fact that we required some of the similar issues on the affordable units as we did on the market rates unit, so they decided not to build it. We've had the Kendall Place come in, and they wanted to do modifications. Peter Freeman is a very good 40B attorney. He was very specific. He made sure that if we were doing these changes, we were gonna allow some on the affordable units. He would have never proposed that, "I wanna do these changes on, on one house or market rate," 'cause that's what he deals with. And that's what we dealt with with that project. I don't know of any other project that we've ever had where there's been one change like this that would be different from any other property in the development.
If I, if I may, I know the hearing's closed, and I'd like to hear the rest of the discussion, but if, if we could open it up, before you take a vote, I'd like to speak a little further.
Sorry, Attorney Clower, you wanna make a comment on?
I'd like, I'd like you guys to finish the discussion, but, but before you close for a vote, I'd, I'd, I'd like you to request you to open it up, 'cause I, I have, I have a, an idea and some comments that I'd like to share, but I'd, I'd like for you guys to finish your, your discussion first.
Understood. Sorry. Thank you. James, where do you fall on this?
I absolutely agree. I don't think Mrs. Clower did anything, intentionally did anything wrong. It's a lovely shed, I think it's absolutely dering as a neighbor that's being opened up, uh, for use, so that a neighborhood issue about storage can be used. My reservation is only, and if this was just a special permit, I would have absolutely no problem approving this. My concern is only because it's a 40B, that I could see a domino effect occurring where, and I, I, there are some, some of the equity arguments that Mr. Dugan has, they resonate with me a little bit, and I'm just concerned that we're just gonna start getting more and more requests to amend these 40Bs. You saw what happened earlier with some of these changes, it took up a significant portion of the evening. So I, I have some reservations, only because it's a 40B, about approving.
And just in the interest of the time, in the, in the late hour of the night, I'll, I'll just say that I, I agree with my fellow board members, the voting ones at least.
Would the board be willing to reopen the hearing?
I'm happy to make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion to reopen made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I have a few comments and an idea that I'd like to discuss with the board. The first is, you know, I think a lot of the discussion is centered around issues with the developer, which I understand are kind of part and parcel of this, but it, it's also separate and apart from what we're talking about tonight. Comprehensive permit does allow for accessory structures. It specifically says that the decision can be modified in order to allow them. This is perhaps a philosophical difference that I, I think I've had with Mr. Dugan, but I, I've always been of the impression that a 40B need not be identical. They must be similar, and not easily discernible is different, but I don't think they believe to be identical. I don't feel like having that argument tonight, and I'm not trying to. But I also think it's worth pointing out that this is not an every 40B issue, because many of your decisions specifically say that no sheds are allowed. This decision does not say that. And I think it is a case-specific issue. Now, however, I have a, I have a proposed solution that I think is worth at least discussing. What if we were to request a continuance and to amend our application to include a shed on, in a, an affordable unit? And then, then you could amend the decision to say no sheds beyond that. Then you have an affordable and a, a, a market rate that would have sheds.
Yes, I'll make a comment, 'cause I just don't know what the procedure is, but I don't think an applicant that owns a specific property can make a modification to another property.
We can find someone.
And the other thing is, this is my worry. It's, it's the density down there, and if you allow one, you have to allow two. If you allow two, what's saying you don't allow four? I, I just, I understand the, the situation you're in. I, I just think it should have never been put there to begin with. Somebody should have flagged that it was a, the condition at least said that you'd need to have approval before you ever moved forward, and I understand-
No one's disputing that.
But, um, you already, I mean, we've got a comment from someone on Locust Field that's already saying, "This is too dense," that they're saying they sat through all the hearings, and adjustments were made. Plus, we, we've already made adjustments to this project to increase the house sizes and the enclosures of rooms in the back that weren't the original.
I don't believe the enclosures were approved, I think those were taken off the table.
Was it taken off, was the closed rooms back off? I don't remember. Were the, were the rooms enclosed in back taken off? I thought some were more allowed if-
Yeah, so that was, I think, part of the bargain to, um-
We did the bonus rooms above the garage and lu-
Right, and to finish the basements.
I just think that's where the issue is, we were trying not to change-
Well, but if the issue's equity, and we're able to make it equitable.
Yeah, but now, but now if you make it equitable, now there's more density on the site, I-
We, we, we're talking about a difference of about 150 square feet on, on a, on a, on a parcel, give or take. You know, this is going from, you know, 21.9 to, to 24.1.
These are parcels right now that don't even have enough, and it's not your fault, don't even have enough space to park cars in the driveways.
So the-
I mean, I'm guessing, I'm just guessing, I know we're talking about the shed, but the photo you put up there that shows where another car was parked, I assume it's because it just isn't room.
We had an extra, we've had an extra car at the property for some time.
And you're not, and it's not that one. I've seen it on other ones, there's one at the beginning. So the developer probably will come back to us anyways because there's other issues which have nothing to do with this, but that, that's what I'm saying. There's been-
So I, I guess, I guess my, my question is, is if equity is the issue and we're able to make it equitable, the board does have discretion as to what, what they can approve. The decision could even be modified further to state no further sheds. You have a place like Kendall Place where you do allow sheds on market rate and on affordable rate, on certain lots and not on others. It's not something that we've never seen before. I think it's a situation where it can be approved by the board and I, I don't think it is the slippery slope argument. I think that they are specific-driven questions. We have a situation where the applicant has, you know, did what, what she thought the right thing to do was and, and is now, you know, obviously dealing with the, the outcome of that. But I think that to, to say that, well, we can't approve it because it's after the fact, when she tried to approve it before the fact, tried to go through the appropriate steps before the fact, I think is, is a tough pill to swallow. So I think, you know, the possibility, if equity is truly the concern, if we're able to, I have to continue this and submit another application for, for one of the affordables, I'll pay for the damn thing. I, I, I don't really care. I, I, I just don't wanna see the outcome of a forced removal of a shed that, you know, doesn't harm anyone.
When the property was purchased, did anyone review the comprehensive permit since the purchase was in a development?
Sure, but the problem is most people don't understand the ramifications of a comprehensive permit. Most laypeople have, you know, zero idea of, of what, what that actually entails. And, and as an attorney who does conveyancing, when I tell people, hey, here's what this means, they go, uh-huh, 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 uh-huh. And, and it doesn't sink in because they're excited about buying the house. I think that, you know, this is, this is not a situation where you're gonna be setting yourself up for hundreds of these applications. Like I said, a lot of your permits specifically say no sheds allowed. And if that was the case, I would have said, hey, Mom, bad, bad news, no sheds allowed. This permit says, says that, you know, accessory structures may be allowed by modification of the permit. So that's what we're trying to do. And if it requires the addition of a shed on an affordable unit, then we'll find a way to do that.
Is it worth an attempt? It's a compromise?
But I, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna waste the board's time or my time-
No, I know.
-if you're not gonna approve that.
I, I, I understand your argument. I ju, I just think that we made allowances in advance and it's an unfortunate situation. I just don't think the structure should be removed.
I agree, Bob. It's-
It's unfortunate.
No, it says completely no ill intent on the applicant's part and arguing beat a dead horse here with her.
No, I'm not gonna waste anyone's time.
All right.
So I would, I would make a motion to close because we reopened.
Second.
Motion to close made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. That leaves us with what to do.
So they applied under, so Noreen, do we have to answer both, the building commissioner and the request for modification?
You should vote on both.
All right. So for the building commissioner's determination that the structure should be removed because it wasn't allowed due to the comprehensive permit and no approval by the zoning board appeals, I would uphold the building commissioner's determination for its removal?
Do we have one at a time then?
Yeah, I guess that's the, yeah, I mean, if we, if we, if we uphold the building commissioner's determination, then how do we even go for, oh, and then we did-
I would take him in reverse order.
Yeah, okay. So that's, that'll be my motion for the building commissioner's determination. We'd vote for that first.
Second.
All right. So a motion was made by Bob, second by Scott.
Sorry, what was the motion to?
So the motion was to,
Hold.
To uphold the building commissioner's determination that the, the shed is a violation and must be removed due to the chapter 40B comprehensive permit.
So a motion was made by Bob and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
So then on the request for modification of a, of a comprehensive permit, number 006-19 pursuant to chapter 40B to allow a shed, I would make a motion to deny the request for modification that the shed, addition of the shed would be a substantial change and against the, make a finding that the shed was placed on the property prior to approval of the zoning board for modification. I think you should make a finding that the applicant did call the building department. Building department did tell her that sheds at up to 200 square feet are allowed if they have 10-foot setbacks. Here's they did not check that this was a comprehensive permit. And then deny it, that it would be a substantial change, it would increase the density in the project and open up to additional sheds being requested for equity issues. Also make a finding that there were letters of support for people, six letters of support for people that live within the development. Also saying that she was sharing the space. That the abutters were both opposed. And that there was a, also a letter in opposition from one of the property owners on Locust Field Road who had come to the other meetings of the development in itself and also put that the board should uphold what they approved the first time and even though they would be allowed to ask for modification of the shed, they're asking that it would be too much for the site.
I think you should include that the chair reserves his right to limit the board to four members.
I would put in there that there was, put a finding in that there was a complaint letter from the director of order. It's in the file. Sitting at an interaction with one of the, or interacting with Mr. Patamas according to his complaint. Chair made a decision that based on the complaint, it would be an appearance of conflict. Without Mr. Patamas, the board still had the required four-member quorum. So the chair used his right to sign those four members and not Mr. Patamas because of the appearance of a conflict and the chance that that would make it an appealable decision.
I also said that I may appeal it on my own right.
And just clarification, it was appointing, it wasn't appointing all four members, it was just appointing Scott as voting pro.
Scott as a voting member.
Well, if you wanna go in that detail, you should put in that I, I reserve the right that I might appeal.
You can always do that. And also put that Mr. Patamas as Mr. Peterson is an associate in the board. You can also put that Member Dugan, the clerk. I'm also felt that Mr. Patamas should be accused from the application due to the information that's in the record.
All right. You just need a length of time that you grant for the shed.
I'm sorry.
Disposition.
Or removal?
Yeah.
What is that usually?
Six months.
Six months?
Maybe less.
I mean, just on, it's not on the issue, I think, I don't know, it's, it's the-
Not like-
I'd agree to.
Ninety days?
Ninety days.
What's your time? I'd give a longer period.
Six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
But six months, do you do it being, what do? We just put within six months if they decide to move it sooner than yet. Also put in there that, you have in there that Mr. Patamas reserved his right to-
I don't know, that's part of the decision. You know, it's not relevant to the decision.
Is it a finding even though it's not relevant?
No, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not part of-
Oh, yeah, right. I see what, I see what you're saying, Noreen. Okay.
All right. Just Bobby made that motion?
Yep.
To deny the modification based upon those findings?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Oppose?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay. So three to one. Simple majority for that.
Despite my disappointment in the outcome of this, I wanna thank you guys for the late hour. This is the latest, I think, I've ever been at a ZBA hearing and I've been to a lot of these. I also wanna wish you all a very happy holiday season. So, thank you for your time.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, Mr. Clower, thank you.
It's 11:30. The last motion to continue the board's business was until 11:30. I'll make the motion to extend to 11:45.
Second.
All right. Made by myself, give the second to everyone. All those in favor?
Aye.
What's left?
Voting the minutes, October 21st, November 4th and November 18th.
We are tabling 18, just 21 and 4.
Should we be tabling all of them?
No, just the last.
Just the 18.
You wanna vote the October 21 and November 4.
All right. October 21st?
It's a motion to accept the minutes for October 21st.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes unanimously. November 4th.
Motion to approve minutes to November 4th.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Tabling November 18th. Board updates, anything? All right, none. Board discussion? Nothing.
That's the tired.
You're right. We sure are. Saturday board meeting is January 29th, 2022. We have a guest speaker and might float some additional agenda items to Noreen and Ashley. Future agenda items? All right. Seeing that, everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Everyone back here in the new year. Next meeting is January 13th. Meeting adjourned.